All right, it looks like we've got everybody in here. It's 6:04, we should get started. Dash, can you take attendance?
Yes, I will. Is that something I announce as, I'll just go through one by one. Commissioner Roddy Yagan, present.
Present.
Commissioner Anthony Moen, present.
Present.
Commissioner Sarah Wenger, present.
Present.
And Commissioner Barbara Higney, present.
Present.
Two, three, four, and...
Suzanne is the other.
Yes.
I believe Suzanne's absent.
I see. All right, thank you very much.
All right, Roddy is obviously our newest Planning Commission member. And the first item of business this evening is the election of a new Planning Commission Chair. Why don't we just start? Is there a motion to elect a new chair?
This is Barb. I just wondered, did we do this last time in executive session, last summer?
No, we discussed it. We discussed qualifications of one of the Planning Commission members.
Thank you. Okay, thanks.
So, yes, this is Sarah Wenger, and I would like to make a motion that is a nomination of my co-commissioner Anthony Moen to serve as Chair moving forward.
This is Barb. I will second that motion.
Okay, I'll call the roll. Roddy?
Yep.
Sarah?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Anthony?
Yes.
And again, Suzanne is absent, 4-0. Congratulations, Anthony.
Thank you, Anthony.
Yes, thank you for...
All right, so I guess that means I take over.
You can take over if you want. I can go through the cases and introduce them for you. And you can leave it. It's up to you.
Sure, well, just before the meeting opened, I think you identified that there's a matter that we need to address as the administrative, as part of the administrative portion of the agenda, which is not part of the posted agenda. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct. The, as I'm sure the Planning Commission members are aware, the project proposed by Kevin Vandenberg on Second Avenue is in front of the City Council right now for a rezone decision. The City Council has declared themselves lead agency. As part of that, there is a 30-day notice period where the City Council has sent out notices to other involved and interested agencies stating that decision and asking if the other agencies wish to object or have any other comments. So I think it would be, I think it would be good for the Planning Commission this evening to discuss that and make a motion whether to accept or reject the City Council's decision, lead agency.
So for clarification, Aaron, I understand that an application for the rezoning is before the City Council is there, this application, does this encompass more than simply the rezoning?
The, no, in terms of, no, what the City Council's reviewing is the rezone. If, I guess to answer your question, it's best to go through the hypotheticals, right? If they don't rezone it, nothing happens, right? The project's not moving forward. If the City Council decides to rezone the property, then the applicant would be in front of the Planning Commission for site plan review, which would begin that entire process, which again would be a type-one seeker action, and at that point, the Planning Commission would be lead agency for that secret review.
And in terms of the secret review, the environmental review, Anthony, the City Council as lead agency would have to analyze the entire proposed project. Their environmental review would not be solely limited to a zone change. Because there is a pending underlying project, they would have to analyze the pending underlying project and all its potential environmental impacts. So I think if your question was, are they just looking at the rezone? The answer is no. They have to look at the rezone and all potential impacts that could flow from that rezone, including the potential impacts that would result from the proposed project, as well as potential impacts that could result or be more dense or more severe than even the project is currently proposed. So they have to take a hard look at all of the potential impacts that would flow from the rezone change, including the proposed project.
And Andy, the "they" that you just referred to is the City Council as lead agency?
Correct. The City Council as lead agency for seeker purposes would be required to look at the entire totality of what's proposed beyond just the rezone for potential environmental impacts. You, the Planning Commission, would be an involved agency under seeker regulations because you do have an approval authority because it would have to come back to you for site plan. So you'd be an involved agency. So you will be involved throughout the process. But the City Council has determined, and I agree with their determination, that they are the appropriate agency to be lead agency because they have the primary responsibility for approving the rezone. Without the rezone, you know, the project doesn't happen. So in my opinion, they are appropriate lead agents.
And so at the time that the applicant formally submits a proposal, whether rezoned or under current zoning, presumably that would be if the request was denied by the City Council, there is no restart of the seeker process, correct? From this point forward, for this project, City Council would be lead agency for seeker.
Sure, unless, unless they deny the rezone or the request for the rezone is abandoned and the applicant chooses to pursue some other type of project, then it would start de novo and we'd go back to a situation where a new lead agency would have to be determined. So in a hypothetical instance where the rezone is denied and they came back for a conventional major subdivision, a residential subdivision, at that juncture, the City Council would no longer be involved because that would be solely within the purview of your commission. And at that point, I would say that you would be the appropriate lead agency for that project going forward. But as long as the rezone is being considered, then the City Council would be lead agency to consider the rezone as well as the underlying project. If they did get to the point where they issued a negative declaration under seeker and approved the rezone, and this is all hypothetical, I don't know that either one of those things would happen, then when the matter came back to you for site plan, the seeker process would be completed unless the site plan that comes back to you is somehow different or more extensive than what was reviewed by the City Council as lead agency. I think, I think that it covers all the hypothetical avenues of how this can play out.
So as a follow-up, well, two things. Number one, I want to recognize that the fifth Commissioner Suzanne Spellin has joined the call, and so she is present currently. But as a follow-up question to that, Andy, is it then correct to say that if the City Council is lead agency and they make a negative declaration for seeker, subsequently, a site plan is submitted to us for review and we feel that there are significant environmental consequences because of the fact that we did not act tonight, we would be barred from raising those environmental consequences as as an issue in our review of the project?
Not necessarily. The seeker process and even completion of the seeker process does not remove your jurisdiction as the Planning Commission. So it, and I thought I covered all the hypotheticals, but here's one I missed. Hypothetically, the City Council as lead agency could eventually negdeck the project for seeker purposes, approve the rezone, and then when the site plan came to you, you would still theoretically have the ability to exercise your jurisdiction under site plan review and deny the project. So your jurisdiction under site plan review is not removed by an environmental determination made by the lead agency. You still have the ability to deny the project. And if you look at, you know, the enabling statutes that create a planning commission as well as a city code and what your role is, if you have concerns about factors, including environmental factors that are negatively, you know, impacted by a project, you can deny it based upon your power under site plan review. It just wouldn't be under the seeker purposes. It would be under your power to act as a planning commission in site plan review.
Andy, one, one other question. And I, this just came up. I know the letter came in this afternoon, but I don't know the current details. But my question is the sizing of a possible project. So it goes from whatever it was, 29 or so single-family homes to something. Is there some number or some number of buildings that's associated with this? Or when does that get settled?
My understanding of the process right now is there's a request for a rezone, and there's an underlying proposed project, which is the proposed project that you previously reviewed when you made your recommendation to the City Council on the merits of rezoning to the P Plans District. To my knowledge, the size and scope of that project has not been altered in any way since you've seen it last. If it is altered through the seeker process before the City Council, then any potential impacts resulting from the size and scope of the project as proposed would have to be analyzed. If the project remains the same and they do obtain a rezone, but then it gets larger or the scope increases when it comes to you for the Planning Commission for site plan review, that would require a reopening of the seeker process because when it gets to, if it gets to you for site plan, the seeker process is only limited to the size of the project that was reviewed by the City Council. So if it changes or gets larger, then the seeker, the seeker process would have to be reopened.
And Andy, if we reopened it at that point, would the City Council still be lead agency by virtue of having already declared themselves as such? Or would it be possible at that point for us to declare ourselves lead agency since the process is now being reopened?
I think in an instance like that, it is possible that because it's through the City Council process and now solely in front of the Planning Commission, if the rezone was obtained, the Planning Commission at that juncture would be the appropriate lead agency. And then the reverse of what's happening tonight would occur. You would send notification to the City Council that you think you're the appropriate lead agency to review this or to review or revise or reopen whatever they had done, and that would then be coordinated. But I do think you could be the lead agency in that scenario.
So, so Andy, just to be clear, the number of, I don't remember the exact number of units that were proposed, but it was a very large number. And so that's the number that's, that we're, that we're really talking about here, that that would be like acceptable if we, if we...
Are you talking about the number of units?
Yeah, that's a matter of zoning. So if the zone is changed, then that's the zoning of the density allowed by that zone is what's allowed on the site.
I have the number pulled up from one of the documents that was sent out. It's 220 to 240 residential units in three buildings.
So to your question, Barb, if that, if that's the number that was reviewed through the environmental review process, through a seeker process, and eventually that process was completed and then they obtained a rezone, and then when it came to you for site plan review, there was now 400 units. Clearly, that wasn't, that exceeded what was reviewed under the seeker process and would require a reopening of the seeker process.
Right, I understand that. But I'm saying, what if it comes back at 220? Then it's baked in. Is that, is that correct? That that's presumed to be in a pre, that's, that number's already been analyzed?
Right, that, that number's been analyzed. But then when it comes to you, if you identify any adverse impacts or change in circumstances that may have occurred since that number was reviewed by a prior lead agency, you would have the ability to reopen the seeker process. Usually that happens in a situation where there are change in circumstances on the ground.
Okay, thank you.
Do any of the other commissioners have any questions?
No.
Thanks. And Aaron, I believe we had some public comments submitted in advance of the hearing regarding this issue.
That, that's correct. That would have, that went out to all the Planning Commission members and will be part of the meeting minutes.
So I know this is not formally part of our agenda, but in light of those comments, I think it would be appropriate to open it to the public if anybody did come to speak on this topic.
Should it just go ahead or should it wait? Sorry, I'm not sure about the procedure.
All right, so the process is that if, if Aaron unmutes you, then you announce your name and your address for the record. And then you can speak your...
I'm so sorry for unmuting myself. I didn't mean no disrespect. I was just unsure if that was asked for unmuting. So I apologize for that. I just want to clarify something about what the seeker is about. Because the seeker, the action on the review in seeker is defined in the EAF that is attached to the initiating that. And the DEC in a letter sent in response to the initiation also defines what the action is that is under review. And so I quote from the DEC's response letter as defining the action under review, quote, "Construction of three, four-story multifamily apartment buildings, multi-use trails, driveway, and parking areas. Forty slip, boat dock, kayak launch, and stormwater infrastructure on 11 acre parcel." I'm sorry, I'm a bit out of fresh breath because I just come out of the garden. And I also forgot to state my name. I'm so sorry. My name is Leo for the Friends of the Mohicans. So what, what, what is important here is that if you would do a seeker just for the rezoning, as has been suggested, that would constitute illegal segmentation, which is prohibited under seeker, the State Environmental Quality Review Act. And indeed, the EAF defines what is under review in this initiated seeker, which is the entirety of the project. And the rezoning is one of the discretionary actions within the review. But indeed, the review is for the entirety of the applied project. And the underlying application, which we hold is incomplete and doesn't fit the standards of a site plan review, still is the project itself. And when you turn to the EAF, you can see that that is the case, that it is the project. And the DEC's letter reaffirms that as well. So it is the project that is the subject of this review. And the rezoning is part of that, which makes, gives reasons for the City Council to be lead agency. But just as much the subject of the rezoning, of the, of the development itself, gives good reason for the commission to act as lead agency as well. And in fact, any involved agency can declare who, that they want to act as lead agency. And in case a dispute can't be resolved, then the DEC resolves and provides clarity for everybody involved. So there isn't really a harm even if the Planning Commission decides to rezon. And just as a final aspect, the letter of the City Council not only asks you to make a determination about your own intent for the lead agency, but it also, and I just have to go there, bear with me, in the quote from the letter that initiates the seeker from the City Council states, "Please also provide any comments, concerns, or questions your agency would like addressed in the review process." Which means that you, in this letter, really should indicate all the things that should be studied in the seeker process, which includes the project as developed, and the developed, proposed development as that is the substantive part of this review, as it is defined as the primary action under review in the EAF. So just to sum up, you should indicate, if you want to be lead agency on this or not, you should indicate what you think should be studied. That could include also your opinion on a positive or negative declaration, the determination of significance that is recorded. We've seen that in many other letters of involved agencies that that is done, and the DEC letter does something to that effect too, although not explicitly. But just to reiterate the most important part, what is under review in this initiated seeker that has been initiated with the letter is the development. Thank you so much for your patience with this lengthy comment. And I'm happy to clarify any questions and any of that. But I think it's really important, and I really appreciate your time and consideration and dedication and your work.
Andy, this is Sarah. I'm, I'm sorry to ask, but is there anything from that statement and comment that, that gives you pause or strikes you as inaccurate?
No, not, not inaccurate. We obviously have a difference of opinion on, on who the appropriate lead agencies should be. Again, it's my opinion, and I think the City Council is the appropriate lead agency for this matter because the lead agency is defined as that agency having the primary responsibility to approve the project. And the City Council approves the rezone request. Without the P District, the project cannot happen. So I do believe that the City Council is the appropriate lead agent. The second point is that in the City Council's letter to you, as you see, they say, hey, if you have any things you want us to take a look at, you have any comments, questions, or concerns, or areas of concern that you want us to analyze as lead agency, let us know and we'll do so. What I would suggest to accomplish that goal, rather than this evening, because you have a big agenda, discuss and come up with a laundry list of things you want them to analyze. The seeker process includes something called scoping. The, the traditional next step in the process right now is when a lead agency is declared, they will engage in a scoping process if a positive declaration is made. If a positive declaration is made to require an environmental impact statement, then a scoping process occurs. At the scoping process, the lead agency and the applicant and involved agencies such as yourself narrow down the scope of areas that need further review and analysis as part of the environmental impact statement. So rather than go through a laundry list of things you'd like them to see, what I would propose is that you respond to them and say, if the scoping process occurs, we as an involved agency would like to participate in that process. That gives you the ability to be in the room when the questions, concerns, area concerns to be discussed are going to be determined if a positive declaration is made. I just think it's, it's an easier way for you to, to get those questions and concerns addressed, rather than tonight trying to come up with a laundry list that you put in a letter and send to them.
That makes total sense. Thank you. Some, and so those issues might be the density that is or may be proposed, or the amount of vegetation being proposed as removed, for example.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And as you know, from, from the prior meetings involving this topic, there is significant public interest in this proposal. So I would anticipate that the, the City Council, if designated lead agency, will get significant comment from the public as well as other agencies, such as yourself, but state agencies and other involved and interested agencies as to what should be analyzed during the seeker process. I'm reasonably confident that they will get significant comment on what should comprehensively be analyzed.
I'm sure.
Thanks, Andy. That also addressed one of my other questions, which was if we were to have a letter, when would that be made? Because as you pointed out with, with our agenda, I don't see that we could collectively put together a letter tonight.
I would say the, the City Council would always welcome individual letters from Planning Commission members for any comments relating to this, this proposal. So this process isn't the only way to get your comments in front of the City Council.
From, from a procedure standpoint, I think you have to make the two determinations and respond back to the City Council. The determinations can be made this evening. The first is whether or not you agree that they're an appropriate lead agency. And then two, just add in that we would like to be included in any scoping process that occurs. And I think you've covered both bases.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wanted to comment? In that case, I'll just make my own comment, which is that, as Andy said before, since the application currently before the City Council regards rezoning, which is within the Council's authority to do, I, I do understand that they would be the natural lead agency for that purpose. My comment is just that, under these circumstances, the Council has already asked us for our recommendation on that rezoning, which we considered over the course of several public hearings last year. And after returning our recommendation, they then once again asked us for further comment on it as they deliberated their own vote. So that raises to me the question about whether the Council has its own reservations about its competency to engage in that process. But I'll leave it to the other commissioners if someone wants to make a motion as to how we should act regarding this, this letter and our response.
Can you hear me? Yes, okay. I'm, I'm just still concerned about the fact that we're already boxed in with this number that someone else has chosen, this number of units. What Andy has explained is if it goes high up from there, that would be, that would be a problem. But we're, it's kind of, I guess the word I'm using is baked in, and that just seems frustrating to me. I don't, I don't really understand that.
Barb, the proposal is the proposal. That, that's the developer's proposal.
Right. I do understand that.
We, we, so, so, I mean, that, that is, that number is what the City Council is going to review for compliance with seeker.
Environmental impact. Okay, thank you.
So do any of the commissioners have a motion with respect to this?
I'm sorry, Anthony. I have to ask Andy one more question. So if the, if the commission was to challenge that declaration, then what ensues? At a really high level, describe to us what would ensue.
If, if any involved agency, not just you, but if any involved agency contests the declaration by another agency, and it can't be resolved amongst the two agencies, it would be submitted to the Commissioner of DEC, State DEC, and the Commissioner of State DEC would make a determination on who the appropriate lead agency is. It happens. It doesn't happen often, but, but it does happen. But that would be the process. If it can't be resolved amongst the two agencies who think they should be lead agency, it's submitted to the Commissioner of DEC. think they should be lead agency, it's submitted to the commissioner of DEC.
So then, Andy, if I'm understanding correctly, if we were to respond to city council and say, having received your letter, we actually think that given the circumstances, we would be the appropriate agency. The city council could respond and say, you know what, fine, and that that would resolve this?
Theoretically, yes. I don't know the likelihood of that. Clearly, they've discussed this issue and made a determination that they think they're appropriate as lead agency. In my opinion, they're the appropriate lead agency. And it stems from the fact that without the zone change, this project cannot occur. There is case law that supports a planning board being lead agency during a rezon process. But it's a case by case basis based upon the facts and circumstances of each case. And I would think in this instance, when reviewing the way the P district zoning is written in your city code, that the city council would be the appropriate lead agency. That being said, if you choose to contest that, like I said, I think the way it works is if it can't be resolved amongst the agencies, then it goes to the commissioner.
Thank you. That was my understanding, too. I just wanted to clarify that if if the agencies do resolve it, they could resolve it without involving the commissioner. It's only if there's a dispute.
Is is anyone opposed to to city council being the lead agency? You know, is there any reason for the planning commission to, you know, not prefer that that be the case here on this instance? If that's what we're debating, I mean, I'm not hearing anyone say that they would be opposed.
I am, Roddy, I'm concerned that the council will act swiftly. And perhaps not see the project in the same way that we do. And I, you know, I don't know that they're accustomed to considering all of those factors that we do on a regular basis. And I don't know that I have the confidence that they will take our perspective to heart because they already have not.
Understood. From what Andy was describing earlier, it seems like we will still have a go no-go sort of say on the project itself regardless of the secret determination. But I'm not sure if I understood that part correctly.
And partly, yes, you will eventually have site plan review authority if the rezon occurs. However, you also have substantial input and involvement during the secret process. You're you, if the city council is lead, you are still an involved agency. It would not, their review would not happen in a vacuum without your input and collaboration throughout the process. So Sarah, I understand the concern that you have that they may not address it in the same manner at the level that you think this commission would as lead agency. But you would have the ability throughout the process, even if they were lead, to raise those concerns and and raise those issues if you feel they're occurring.
The opportunity versus are we tied in procedurally in that sort of scenario in a way that makes it such that our our voices required to be whatever attended to? In other words, is it just okay, we have the opportunity to speak our mind or is it the things that we voice will actually have to be addressed procedurally as a requirement?
Great question.
Yeah, they would have to be addressed. Working from the presumption that they will pause deck this and require an environmental impact statement. And again, that's just a presumption. The environmental impact statement involves taking comments from not just involved agencies, interested agencies and the public at large. And then a direct response, a direct and substantive response to every meaningful comment submitted during EIS process. And those comments can come directly from interested agencies, involved agencies, members of the public, anybody can, and as long as it's a meaningful comment, they are required to address whatever those comments are.
Thanks.
I just wanted to say that I share Sarah's concerns and that was part of what I was trying to voice before, that the council lacks the expertise that this board has proven in considering various applications. And part of it is also just, I think that in most situations where there have been multiple interested agencies in the past, at least during my term on the board, we've been the lead agency. So it's a somewhat unusual situation for us. To the extent that in a situation where there were a positive declaration, like Andy said, we're heavily involved in that process. I think that that could be fine, but I share Sarah's concerns that again, things could move swiftly and that would not be the shape of how the process plays.
Guys, it's about 45 minutes in and we've yet to hit the consent. Is there is there a motion here?
Yes, Aaron, and I I make very clear to my co-commissioners that feel free not to second this motion. But I make a motion that we accept the city council's declaration as lead agency for this project.
Do we have a sec?
I'll second it. This is Barb.
Okay, putting it to a vote. We'll start with our newest member, Roddy Aiken.
Am I able to abstain?
Yes.
Yeah, I will abstain.
Sarah Winger?
Yes.
Suzanne Spellin?
I missed most of this because I'm having computer problems, so I'm going to have to abstain as well. I didn't catch all the important stuff in the beginning.
Barbara Higbee?
Yes.
And I'll vote no. The motion carries two, one.
No, actually, I don't.
Not carry. Motion doesn't carry, yeah.
Okay, so the motion to, not to overlawy it, but you need a majority of the whole. So you need a three for motion to pass. So the motion to consent to the city council being lead agency failed.
Yep.
But that's a vote.
That's a vote. Yep.
Okay.
That is a vote. That is an official action. You have two courses of action now. You can you can move on and say, we voted and that was the result. Someone can make a different motion and we can count the votes on that. If you proceed from here after taking that vote, then it wouldn't constitute a consent to the city council be lead agency, but it wouldn't constitute opposition either.
It constitutes it constitutes us not not accomplishing anything in the last 45 minutes.
That's right.
Correct. It would not, it wouldn't constitute consent, but it wouldn't constitute opposition.
Can we just move on? And start our agenda?
Absolutely.
Okay, moving to the first to the consent. Now, this, I believe that there was some staff comment to remove this from the consent agenda. Is that correct?
I believe that's correct. I think the concern, Dash may have more information on the concern there.
It was just a comment. I'm on the call.
Oh, hey, James.
Hey.
And just to clarify, we're on 2020 17.
And it is customary, if anyone wants it removed from consent, we just move it on to the regular agenda.
All right. So then we'll just go directly into the regular.
Okay.
Should we then just do this item first?
Sure.
So 873 Fifth Avenue, is the applicant present?
Yes, and the architect, this is Lisa Rodriguez. I prepared the site plan for the project. And we're trying to legalize the use of the property. The property was formerly used as a banquet house and is now being used as storage for the Old Daily Custom Catering Business. Steph Pettit's also on the call and I would like her to address to you kind of what she's done with this property since she purchased it and just to give you some background. So this is the first step before we go to zoning to ask for a use variance is to have the site plan review. I guess actually, can I ask you why it was asked for this taken off the consent agenda? Is there a specific issue?
There were some staff comments. So if you would rather have Dash elaborate before before you present the application, that's fine.
I think the client should understand why it's being reviewed individually.
And I'll actually open this up to James because those comments regarding the placement on the agenda were from James.
Yeah, yeah. Hi, everybody. It's purely procedural. You know, because this is not an allowed use, it makes more sense to me for the planning commission to not act on this tonight before the ZBA has an opportunity to make their determination on whether the use variance is going to be approved or denied.
Okay, so then we probably shouldn't have even been on this agenda and just gone to zoning first and then come to planning?
Sometimes it is good to have planning at least review the concept and provide some feedback before you go through that process.
Okay.
So, you know, I think to make the best use of this time, it would be to present, you know, present your project and solicit any comments from the board.
Okay, then I'll I'll ask Steph if she can just describe what she's done with the property since she purchased it. The process and just to get you oriented and how she uses it.
Right. So and I actually don't even remember what year we bought it, Liza, but we purchased three parcels in order to acquire the parking lot across the street from our catering company. And it was the only way they would allow, the city would allow us to buy it. In order to get the big parking lot, we had to buy the banquet hall, which was in total disrepair, and then a smaller parking lot with it. And so we purchased it, we paid property taxes, and then we paid over $60,000 to have it demolished because it was not able to be used. And in that process, we were told that this one portion of the building actually was structurally sound and that it would be a perfect warehouse. So we started using it as a warehouse. It is hideous. We know it's completely ugly and it needs to be fixed. But we haven't really known what to do and honestly, money hasn't been as good as we would like. But last January, we went and met with code. We talked about what repairs we needed to make to make it legal. We met with a draftsman who was drawing up drawings for us. And this was all on the veins of being a warehouse. And then he would get them stamped. And then, of course, COVID hit and we stopped the whole project. And then it wasn't only until I recently that we realized that we were told that we were not zoned to be a warehouse. It was never even a consideration when we purchased the building. And it certainly was never mentioned when we met last, you know, January 20 of 20. So we're kind of in a pickle because we do need the space. We store vending trucks and carts in it. We've tried to come up with other uses, but it's all fabricated, all faking it just so we can use the majority of it as a warehouse. Our intention is to improve the fix the roof, the front line, make it look like a period warehouse, put an awning, you know what I mean, like a marquee over the front, put garage doors on the side, side it. I mean, it'll be beautiful. Fix it. But its real function for us in the city is where we store all our catering wares. I mean, it is full. I mean, there are ovens, there's everything we use for a large catering operation stored in there. And without it, we'd then be applying for a permit to put a similar metal structure in our parking lot. I mean, we just, we need it. And without it, I don't know, we'll have to sell and get a whole other operating, you know what I mean? It's kind of like really use it.
Right. So this board is interested in site issues, I believe. So I think we can leave it at that. They understand your situation and can let us know if there's anything they'd like to see addressed as a part of the project should you get approved by zoning.
Well, I spoke briefly with, I think it was Steve and Bellman, am I saying his name right?
Strickman?
Yes. And we were talking about how, you know, there are issues with the one-way street there that ultimately if that weren't a street, that could create a great corner, but the street right next to us is one-way and it has the water main under it. So, you know, we've been trying to get creative on how we would make it not be so this big, vast, open kind of not appropriate looking with the gas station and this big grassy area, you know, we're open to that, you know, landscaping. You know, garage doors with pulling trucks so it doesn't look like an eyesore boat and we're, we need a little guidance, but what else to do?
Okay, well, let's turn it over to the board and see what they would like to say.
Thank you. Before we do that, are there any members of the public here to comment on this project tonight? I'm not seeing any hands, Aaron. Did you see anything?
No, I didn't receive any public comment either on this proposal.
Okay, commissioners, any comment?
Yes. My comment is that, agreed, the building looks terrible. I did not drive by. I'm relying on photographs and I think we need to see at least repairs. Maybe not full facade reconstruction, but please show us what your proposed repairs, particularly to the roof edge.
Yeah.
So anticipate us wanting to see that once.
So you'll also notice that it's like a surgery took place where the rest of the building was pried off and you have all that like chunky brick. We know how horrible that looks. Our intention was to address that last January. If we receive the restaurant revitalization money that we have applied for, we will have a budget to make repairs where we really want them. But at the very least, if we have to just cover it with siding, that's appropriate, we will. It's just a matter of us. We're 80% down, so I commit to doing whatever I can. I don't know how fast that timeframe.
But I think as your, as you know, as your initial measure, make it look like a whole building. It can,
Yes.
I'm, I know, speaking for myself, I'm willing to look at an ugly building for a period of time, provided that I don't, you know, see through holes in the building or see roofing ripped off.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
So Anthony, are we looking for an action here?
A motion?
So since you, correct me if I'm wrong, Stephanie, but you're on the zoning board agenda for July, correct?
Yes.
Would our meeting in July, which takes place?
21st.
Would that provide you enough time? I mean, I think essentially what we can offer you tonight is that we can adjourn this to a date certain so that you're on a future agenda already, and you have a date to come back in light of the comments that have been made tonight, and hopefully at that point, resolve the issues of the zoning board.
But I just want to, if, if, just to be clear on the avenues the planning commission can take tonight, if the only comment is the building needs work, the, the board could act tonight with that stipulation and the stipulation that they obtain the use variance from the ZBA. If the building looks so bad, but you guys want to see additional documentation, I would have them come back next month. But if there's no additional plans that you want to see, there'd be no reason for them to come back next month, just to settle on fixing up the building, right?
Right. I suppose, Aaron, my understanding was that Sarah was looking for specifics of what improvements will be made to the building. Maybe I'm wrong about that. So.
Thank you, Anthony. I'm comfortable if I can lay out some qualified stipulations. I'm comfortable making a motion. Shall I do that?
Just one other question. Is our motion also going to include any kind of landscaping or anything? Or we just not worry about that right now? I mean, I'd like to move this along.
Yeah, well, so again, it gets a little complicated. The more stipulations we tack on, it's, we're not trying to, you know, create a narrative that we turn into a site plan later. If you guys want a site plan, I would go the route of getting a site plan in elevations. If it's just a couple of touch-up items, you know, a plant lawn, barb, or re-side the building, Sarah, I would say that would, that would work for an action this evening. And again, just for the record, there's no seeker as part of this. It's type two. It doesn't require review.
Right. Okay.
Therefore, I would like to make a motion that we approve the project with the following conditions. First and foremost, that all approvals required from the ZBA are obtained, that the building be made weather tight, and that includes appropriate filling of all, of all openings in walls and roofing membranes, and, and if there are any scrub trees, shrubs, or weeds that they be removed from the site.
Sarah, I think they were offering more than that. Garage doors and various things also.
Functioning, properly functioning building openings.
Great.
Thanks, Barb.
This is Roddy. I will second that motion.
Great. And before we receive the vote, Aaron, is that specific enough for, for your purposes?
Yes. Yeah, that would work.
Great. So turning to the vote, Sarah Winger?
Yes.
Roddy Yagan?
Yes.
Barbara Higbee?
Yes.
Suzanne Speller?
Yes.
And Anthony Moen, yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our next item. This is 297 Husick Street. Is the applicant present?
Yes, I'm here.
Could you state your name for the record?
Absolutely. My name's Dan Summers. I'm president of Somerset Real Estate Investment Corporation.
Thank you. So take it away and present your application.
Aaron, did you want to start, or should I?
Yeah, I can, I can take care of this one, guys. This is a, just a, this is a waiver for parking in the front yard. If you bear with me a moment, I'll pull up the site plan, share my screen, and walk you guys through it. First, did, did all the planning commissioners receive, I think we received two, two letters from the public? You guys did get that in your email, correct? It went right to you, I believe?
Yes.
Excellent.
Yes.
System's working. All right. Can everyone see that screen?
Yes.
Okay. So this is a subject property. It's on the corner of Husick Street and 22nd Street. The applicant is here this evening for this section of the property. Tax maps show this as two, I'm sorry, tax maps show this as one parcel. However, it is two separate parcels. So there is the home on the corner. And then behind that, at one time, was a garage for the property. It is its own structure on its own lot. So we're only here tonight regarding this lot. And the applicant wishes to put in a curb cut and approximately a 20-foot by 25-foot paved area to park vehicles. And the reason they're here tonight is because this is considered parking in the front yard, the front yard to 22nd Street. So again, it's not about whether or not the applicant could put a driveway in, as long as the driveway went back beyond the front building line here. It's only because the cars will be parked here. It's not, it's not the driveway. Just the location of the parking. Does that make sense? You guys have done one of these before?
Yes.
Okay.
So is it that zoning traditionally prohibits it from, from having parking in the front yard?
That's correct, Roddy. And our code allows relief through a waiver granted by the planning commission.
Gotcha.
So, Aaron, I think it looks, when you're there, it looks like there's two driveways coming in. Is that correct? That it just looks like two driveways? Or is that?
You may be talking about back here, there is a shared driveway, which provides access to this second parcel here and to this residence up here. This is a completely separate parcel that does not currently have a driveway.
Okay, I'm glad, okay.
We would, um, yeah, we do not allow second curb cuts generally.
Yeah. Okay. And then why would, how, what's, how do they park there? I mean, it's just a, is there a plan for the, where the parking goes?
The, the parking is shown right here in this 20-foot by 25-foot wide.
Right. But usually we see parking spaces, not just a grid. Is this just one parking space?
It's enough area for two, two vehicles.
So I pull in and I veer to the left, or I pull in and I veered next to the car on the left and park to the right of it.
It's, yes, it's a residential, this is not a.
It's a residential driveway. Is that, and, and I am curious, is this wood framehouse structure used as a residence?
Dan, I believe that would be a question for you. You have to unmute yourself, Dan.
Sarah, can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, this, this structure right here is a residence.
And the garage on the adjacent parcel serves this residence?
The, originally, Sarah, this was the, the home and office of Dr. Brandeis, who was a dermatologist in the triarys. I mean, they know him.
Yeah.
And he, this was his residence right here that I'm pointing to, and this was his office. And there were two, two separate parcels. So when I purchased the property, we are doing a cosmetic rehab on Dr. Brandeis's residence, and we are converting the existing office to also to a residence. So there's no existing parking. This driveway right here will, will be the driveway for this residence here. And they'll, and currently there is no driveway for the residence that's on the corner.
Understood. Thank you.
Will, can I ask a question? I don't want to cut anyone off. Two, two things. In the street view you're looking at, it's clear that the driveway may overlap that tree. Will it be cutting that tree down? And then also, in plan view on the drawing, it looked as if the proposed driveway overlapped the property or the parcel line, the lot line. And if they're going to be sold as individual residences, then it seems you'd have a driveway that sits over the line on the neighbor's property. See, the hatched region extends above the dark black property line.
Yeah, this right, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
The, the proposed driveway is only on this parcel. It does not overlap. There is a 10-foot space between the existing structure and the lot line. So that's right here. So there is no overlap. And in relative to the tree, the tree has already been removed.
Well, that's sad.
Yeah, that's a beautiful old one.
I don't, I don't understand them. I feel as though this drawings incorrect them.
And I don't, and just the other question on this, I still don't understand. If you pull into park in that hatched area, how do you, do you just back out onto 22nd Street? Or is there some way to turn around and just get back out?
You would, you would pull in, there'd be a curb cut right here. There should be space for two cars.
Nobody, nobody can see your mouse on.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. But Barbara, I believe you're correct. There's not enough room there to turn around a vehicle on the site. The vehicles would pull in, they'd either have to back in off of the street to pull out nose first, or they would be backing out onto the street.
Yeah. And the issue, the issue is that it is close, very close to Husick. I mean, if, even if you had a curb cut there, it's awful close to.
Just, but again, just to put it in perspective, that is, that is the condition, three doors down. Right? That's parking in the front yard with vehicles that are backing out on similar, similar driveways. So no need to turn around the vehicle on the lot.
Right. But, and this was looking for two, two spaces next to each other.
Yep, just like the, just like the, the house right over.
Most driveways.
Yeah, most driveways are 185 for two vehicles.
Yeah.
I'm still confused, though, as to why the hatched area overlaps the dark black property line.
I, I thought, Roddy, that the, that the, if you look close here, you see that there's an old lot line.
The deed line?
Yeah.
I see, yeah, I see that it's off of the deed line.
I'm not sure if, I'm not sure if there might be some sort of reciprocal agreement between these two lots for access. Um, but if a driveway is, is to be installed, we would, we would ask that that be easement, but that is allowed. I mean, there's a shared driveway right, right here.
Hey, Aaron?
Yeah.
If, if you blow up the site plan a little more, you'll see that the line above the hatched area is called a deed line.
Right.
And it then references deed reference two. And if you look at the map, deed reference two is a reference to the conveyance to Somerset Real Estate Corp. by deed in 2020. So that may be the new property line based upon the 2020 deed. And this survey is utilizing the prior deed lines in the dark black. But it does specifically say that the latest deed, deed line is the one that's referenced above it.
That, that is correct.
Okay, I mean, and that answers my question. My main concern was what happens if the lot, two lots are split between two different buildings and owners, and then there's a four-foot wide section of asphalt for the one person to park on. They're not going to be very happy. But if it's entirely on the other lot, yeah, that answers what I was concerned with.
This is, this is Barb. I'm just still concerned that it's, they're backing out within, it looks like about 60 feet of the, of the intersection. Whereas the other ones all have clear sight lines. It just seems tight to me. So I don't know if it's enough to object to it or not, but is there some, isn't there a guideline about how, when you get close to an intersection, especially like Husick Street?
Is that a question for me, or?
I guess, yeah. I mean, it just, is it different because it's so close to the intersection? Or is that not an issue?
I mean, it, it would be if it were closer. I don't, I don't, I don't believe it's so close as to cause a, to cause a conflict there, probably.
Okay.
Um, yeah.
Do we need to hear from the public?
I was about to ask, were there any members of the public who came tonight to give comment?
We did have those two letters.
If those were sent to the commissioners, and those will be part of the, the meeting minutes. We need a motion, I would think, yes.
So did somebody specifically state whether the distance, the offset from the main intersection is code compliant? I mean, that, that sort of answers us. Was that what the, the last reply was that I heard?
That's correct. There's no, there is no code issue with the location of that driveway.
Okay.
In that case, this is Sarah. I'd like to make a motion to accept the site plan as presented.
Do we have a second?
This is Roddy. I will second it.
Okay, Barbara Higbee?
Yes.
Suzanne Speller?
Yes.
Sarah Winger?
Yes.
Roddy Yagan?
Yes.
And Anthony Moen, yes. Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. The next item on the agenda is P L P C 2021-15. All right, the next item on the agenda is PLPC 2021 15. This is a project at 1800 Peoples Avenue. Um, the board last saw this with a proposal to demolish a single family residence. Um, that, that residence was demolished and the site was restored to lawn. Um, since then, the, uh. The entity that operates at that, uh, facility, it's a dialysis center. Um, they've come back with a plan here to, uh, provide some additional parking for employees and for customers. Um, Vishal is with us this evening from Boulder Engineering presenting this project.
Hey, good afternoon. Vishal, right here with Boulder Engineering, uh, representing Dallas's Clinic, Inc. Um, Aaron, just confirming, it's okay for me to share my screen here, right? Oh, it's disabled.
Yeah, I was just gonna say. Hang on. Uh, go ahead, you can share.
Okay, perfect. So I'll just start here with an aerial and just give you guys some background of the site location. Uh, let me know if you can see this. So here's our project site, um, just at the corner of Tom Phelan Place, Peoples Avenue. Existing Dallas's Clinic. Um, this is the single, um, family home, uh, that Aaron just mentioned that was demolished back, I believe, in, in January of this year. Uh, since then, uh, we've been working with Dallas's Clinic here to see what site improvements can be made. Before I jump into that, let me go and show you the existing survey. So we can talk about that. So here's the existing condition plan. Um, this does not show, uh, the previously existing, uh, single family home over here. Two-way circulation through the project site. ADA spaces here up front next to the building. Uh, there's. Kind of an employee lot here, basically used by employees, uh, currently. Um, there's also really no designated space for loading and unloading, uh, Dallas's, uh, clinics usually, they don't have ambulances coming in, but they do have, uh, ambulates. Uh, that pick up and drop off patients just at pre-decided times and, uh, sometimes they wait for them in the parking lot and pick them up as well. Uh, so the purpose of this was basically just to provide a little bit more parking, uh, just for patterns of the site. Parking on the site is very tight today. Um, improve some circulation, uh, provide just a designated, um, unloading area for, for patients to just be able to unload and load back into ambulates that. That delivered them to the site and just basically make some minor ADA improvements while we're at it too. And just clean up the site. It's, it's at a corner and it's visible and it would be nice if it looks better than it is today. So. With that being said, let me just jump into the proposed plan. Um, and I can share that with you as well. There it is. Okay. So here's the proposed improvements. Um, firstly, everything you see here in dark gray is, uh, new pavement. Everything else will be existing, um, as it is on the site. Uh, we're moving, there were parking spaces here, we're just moving them back a little bit just to provide some more turnaround area here. It's, it's an old site and this area was pretty tight. Um, and then we're proposing four more parking spaces, uh, just along Tom Phelan Place here. Uh, you'll notice these are a little longer than our typical, um, 18 foot long spaces, uh, just so these can accommodate ambulates. If need be, they can also accommodate, uh, just your passenger vehicles. Um, over here in front of the building, uh, we provided just a little designated loading zone. Um, an accessible landing area with a ramp, just so it's easier for ambulates to drop off customers and easier for them to access the site. Um, we noticed that this area in the front here was pretty tight. Um, there was some congestion here with the, with the ADA spaces being right here in existing conditions. Uh, so we went and took that and pushed that west towards this parking lot and just, just kind of cleaned this area up and, and provide some more room for circulation. And for, um, accessible vehicles to back out and exit the site. Um, in addition to that, we made some, um, traffic circulation improvements. Um, as of now, the site is completely a two-way site with three access points. Uh, this right here in front of the building again was an issue. Uh, it would get congested, it would get confusing. And, uh, we believe turning this into a one-way out only, uh, provides a better circulation, not just in front of the building, but also a safer condition at Peoples Avenue. Um, in addition to that, I believe that was mostly the gist of it, you know, other than that is just restriping the parking lot. Um, you know, repairing any payment areas that might not, that might not be looking nice right now and just cleaning up the site. Uh, so with that said, I'll, I'll turn it over to the, to the planning commission and, uh, just answer any questions you guys might have.
Thank you. Do any of the commissioners have questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I, I have a couple. Um, do you have the plans or anything showing signage for? Entry, um, and direction to traffic as they approach that, uh, series of three entrances?
Yes, um, let me just share my screen again. So this site plan shows the proposed signage. Uh, we're gonna have one-way signs on both sides of this driveway to direct the patrons. Uh, and to know that, to let them know this is a one-way exit only. There's also an existing sign here, uh, that we're gonna reface and tell the patrons that this is, um, not an entrance and that, that entrance is gonna be from Tom Phelan Place. Um, and, uh, that's basically it, because the only circulation we were changing was over here at this intersection or at this driveway, really.
Okay, thanks. Um, my, my, my follow-up would be about, um, grading and drainage. Is there any kind of storm, uh, system alterations that are required as a result of this?
Not necessarily. So there was an existing building here. There was, and that was demolished in what, past six months, I believe. There was, um, asphalt area associated with it. Uh, so our application identifies it, and since this was done within the last five years, I mean, much more recently than that, then, uh, we don't believe there should be any additional stormwater requirements, Aaron. Um, be happy for you to chip in and let us know your thoughts too about that.
No, the, the modifications being proposed here, just some, um, slight addition, uh, additions of pavement. Won't significantly affect the conditions that are out there now and. We don't have any history of problems at this particular facility, so it's not a concern.
Great. Thanks, guys.
Pleasure.
So thanks, everyone.
This is Sarah. I have, uh, a request and I, I did step away for about 60 seconds. If Roddy said, brought this up, I apologize for repeating. Um, but. I fully appreciate the width of this new, um. Sort of the turning area where you're coming, um, into this sort of accessory parking lot.
Over here on Peoples Avenue?
Yes, thank you. But, um, and, and maybe this isn't a but. But, it would be really nice on the corner. Where it notes, um, green space and snow storage. It would be really nice to landscape that. I have to say, I think that the Ruben Dialysis Center, you know, I went to RPI, I lived at Bar H across the street. And it literally for 25 years has always been a beautiful property. It's always looked really great. I would love for them to continue that, that respectful. Treatment of their property. And so if you can plant that a bit more heavily, I think it would be appreciated. I think the neighbors would appreciate it too.
Sure, uh, we are showing one proposed tree as of now in the corner. Uh, we're also showing a row of shrub. Um, if, if the board feels like, uh, we need to add a tree, uh, we can definitely do that.
Um. Go ahead, Rod.
I was only thinking about it in terms of the snow. It, it, does that leader, that call out, say that it's being used for snow storage?
Yes.
Meaning, meaning will the, the lot basically depend on that area for plowing snow into a big pile in that corner?
Uh, just in temporary conditions, uh, they do come and haul snow off the site.
Oh, okay.
It's immaculate all the time. It's amazing.
They try, they, they try their best to maintain it and that's, that's one of the reasons we're trying to come in and just redo the site. Uh, it's, it's kind of, you know, with time it falls apart a little bit, so it'd be nice to just, uh, pretty it up a little bit again.
That's all, that's all I had. Makes total sense.
So, so just to clarify, Sarah, was that a? The, the applicant stated the, uh, one additional tree. Because there were some, there were some shrubs and things already called out. Is, is there anything else that you'd like to see?
I think it would be nice to, I think it would be really nice to line that corner. So if you just take that planting bed with shrubs, that funny long oval, you can just extend that to the north.
Sure, just extend it all the way up to that proposed tree.
Yeah, and then just have a little bubble on the, to the east of the tree and leave the open area.
Yes.
Just as is. I think that would be really great.
Yeah, we can do that.
It'll anchor that corner really nicely.
Okay, yeah, no problem.
That's all I have.
Any other commissioner come? Okay, uh, any members of the public who are here to comment on this project tonight?
Hello, Elizabeth Rodriguez here from 1986 15th Street. I just want to echo Sarah's comments about the landscaping at the corner. I think it's a little light on landscaping. I wish that since they were, you know, taking a fresh look at the parking lot, that if there were a way to get rid of one of those curb cuts, that would be nice. I don't know, you know, without looking at it, if that could be done. Uh, and a logic complaint that they took down a single family house in our neighborhood or good residence. And that's disappointing. That's it.
Any other members of the public here to comment tonight? Okay, so, uh. Aaron, this, this is an unlisted action?
That's correct. Yeah, the, uh, the steps that the. Um. The steps that the planning commission would have to take this evening. Um, would be a determination of, of lead agency. And then a seeker declaration. Uh, followed by a, an action on the site plan review, which it sounds like there would, if, if that were a motion to approve, there would be at least one stipulation. Um, to, to amend the landscaping as discussed.
Right, thank you. So does any of the commissioners have a motion regarding lead agency?
This is Sarah. Dan, I move that we be, that the planning commission be made lead agency for this project.
I'll second. It's Barb.
All right, uh. Moving to a vote, Barbara Higbee?
Yes.
Suzanne Spellen?
Yes.
Sarah Winger?
Yes.
Roddy Yagan?
Yes.
And Anthony Moen, yes. And then regarding a secret determination, does anyone have a motion?
This is Sarah. I'll make a motion that we, uh, that declared this as an unlisted action.
It would be a motion for.
Negative declaration. Sorry.
That's okay.
This is Suzanne. I second.
Okay, moving to a vote. Barbara Higbee?
Yes.
Suzanne Spellen?
Yes.
Sarah Winger?
Yes.
And Roddy Yagan?
Yes.
And Anthony Moen, yes. So that motion carries. And then, uh, do we have a motion for an action on this, uh, application?
This is Sarah and I am pleased to, uh, make a motion to accept the site plan. As presented with one condition, and that is to extend the north-south planting bed along Tom Phelan. And to add us a planting bed to the east of the tree at the corner.
This is Anne. I second.
Okay, all those in favor, uh, Barbara Higbee?
Yes.
Suzanne Spellen?
Yes.
Sarah Winger?
Yes.
Roddy Yagan?
Yes.
And Anthony Moen, yes. The site plan is approved, five zero.
Thank you so much and thank you, um, Aaron and Dash for your help throughout this. Appreciate them.
You're welcome.
Bye.
The, uh, the next item on the agenda is PLPC 2021 16, uh, property at 2301 15th Street. This is the former Naughty Pine Restaurant and Bar. Um, the applicant, Aiman Khalil, was in front of you guys, uh, last month or the month before for the, uh, Amanti Pizza. Which is a kitty corner to this. Um. He's being represented this evening, I believe, by Ed Esposito of Monarch Design.
Yes. Yes, thank you, Aaron.
Uh, Ed, would you like me to, uh, share, um, the site plan?
Yes, please.
Whenever you're ready, ready.
Oh, okay. All right. Um, thank you, everyone. Um, as you know, uh. Aiman, uh, has the Amanti Pizza across the street from this. He purchased the old Naughty Pine. And, uh, during the renovations, we have submitted some plans for building department review, but. We're, we're looking at, um, an existing site with, with an old foundation at the back. And it's a natural, um, discussion to have regarding of your patio exit. And a, and some outdoor seating here. So we've shown, um, some sketchup models, site plan. And what the elevation is, how it fits on the building. Aiman owns a lot of those rental properties behind there, so we don't anticipate any. Um, kickback from the, the, the backyard residential, but it's an existing gravel parking lot. Uh, there's 19 cars there. There's on-street parking on Button, which totaled 27 cars. He's got, um, as you know, it was a bar. He's since taken that out. So he's gonna have all restaurants. There's approximately, uh, 20 seats there and. We're gonna have some tables at full capacity. We don't really know, but we're showing realistically, uh, 18 seating proposed. Um, and, uh, he did decide to do a wood concrete deck extension, so. It'll have that little 45 knockoff with some, um, uh, rear exit steps, but pretty much it's gonna be. Anyone who enters the restaurant will have to exit through the restaurant. Uh, we'll have a, uh, emergency exit only at the back. Once it's fenced in, there's some security issues. Um, with leaving the tables out at night, we had proposed a railing, but it's gonna be a secure enclosure. And he'll, it's, it's, it, currently it's timber per the look. And we showed you some views of that. So we have some landscaping back there. Um, when all is said and done, the, uh, existing walks. And he's punching in new windows on the building and updating the facade. The statistics, the statistics, if I can spit that out. 625 square feet of, uh, proposed patio deck. So, all in all, there's a loss of probably two gravel spots in the back. The rest was. An old rubble foundation that there's no love lost to be covered over, uh, and adapt. Uh, and adaptively reused for this outdoor seating area. And, uh, now coming out of COVID restrictions, we first looked at this for outdoor seating. Now, I think he's healthily can say, you know, his business plan could support, um, indoor, both indoor and outdoor seasonal seating. And. So the parking areas, it's, we're still maintaining sixteen point nine percent green space. There's a, a nice healthy tree buffer that's labeled existing woods along the, 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 that will remain. Gravel is still gravel. Uh, the dumpster is still a dumpster in the corner with new enclosures. Uh, there's some, there is some building, uh, sight lighting at the back now. We had the big old former fluorescent Naughty Pine sign that's there. That will be re, be removed and he's rethinking the awning canopies. That it was quite a feature to this old building. Um, we're gonna do something with that. I think that's gonna become more of a permanent box than, um, newer age material. But all in all, that's the application I didn't see. Hopefully we can move through and, and get started on, uh, pouring concrete. After we get the, uh, the review. If there's any questions, we'd be happy to respond.
Thank you. Any, uh, commissioner comment?
Uh, this is Barb. I just wondered, will there be any shrubs along the, the parking lot? Just anything, any kind of landscaping along there? You, you showed us the trees in the back, but I'm talking along, along this front.
Um, we had him planted, Barb. There's a natural, uh, it's kind of worn out with old sidewalk and like it's very gravelly. There's, there's really no distinction for, for the old city walk, but we had him plant on that. Uh, because in the past, I know there's a lot of snow there. We're, we're, we've gathered our landscaping around the deck to enhance that area. Because we're gonna have a, um, at least a two-foot area of cheek wall there to scrape. So we've got some shrubberies, um, along the, the back, but none, nothing along Hut. Um, we don't know if it grow. It's like, it's city rubble. I mean, to get anything to grow there, even lawn, the, um, he'd have to dig that out. And, um, it's, it's very dry and, and concrete looking.
A couple of questions I have. I see in one of the three D renderings, I think it might be the last one, second to last yourself. They show a lamp post on the back side. Um, so we'll, and it's like customers exit right through that corner. Is there any other lighting that's gonna be added on, maybe as part of the timber pergola?
It, it may be hard to see. There, we have three of those, uh, they're like eight-foot hook lamp details. One at the rear, uh, well, two at the rear and one on the hut inside. Um, he, he's gonna have those, you know, those propane heaters. And there, there is going to be at and over on each side of the patio door, uh, wall scotch lighting there. So he, that's kind of like a candlelight thing, uh, at, at every table. There are three smaller hook lights there proposed, just more for accent lighting and for.
Go ahead.
Any other commissioner?
Anthony, I'll just say for the record, I'm, I'm delighted that Aiman's doing something with this property. And although I, I, you know, I would like to say, oh, do this and that to beautify, you know, the parking lot. Or create a buffer between the parking lot and the street. I, I'm not going to, because I think what he's proposing is already quite significant and generous. I think it would be great if you can do anything to continue to beautify that property. But I think what you're proposing is significant. So, thanks.
Thank you, Sarah. And I do tend to agree with Barb's comment that it would be nice to have some kind of plantings along the rest of the length of the parking lot. But I, I also agree with Sarah that what's proposed is definitely an improvement as it is.
Um, only one other thing I might offer, just as a recommendation, would be some sort of water hookup outside at that patio. Uh, whether it be for hand wash station or for, uh, whatever, but just some sort of water hookup could be a good idea.
Very good. Yeah, he's, he's updating the internal plumbing and, uh, a frost-proof water pit would be appropriate there.
Yep. Like Sarah said, very happy to see at least somebody doing something with that space.
Okay, if there are no further commissioner comments, are there any members of the public here to comment tonight? I'm not seeing any.
Oops, wait a minute. It's Elizabeth Rodriguez again, nineteen eighty-six fifteenth street. I just want to say, uh, looks like a nice improvement to the building and I'm looking forward to it.
Great, thank you. Are there any other members of the public? Okay, I don't see any other hands. Um, so Aaron, this is a type-two action?
Correct. The, the reason this is only a type-two action is because the, the structure in the parking are all existing. The only modification is the patio. Um, and it just doesn't rise to the level of an unlisted action. So the only, um. There's only one action that the board would need to take this evening. It would be the approval or denial of the application.
Hey, does any of the commissioners have a motion regarding the site plan?
This is Roddy. I'll bring a motion to approve.
Sarah, I second.
Okay, and put it to a vote. Barbara Higbee.
Yes.
Suzanne Spellen.
Yes.
Sarah Wengert.
Yes.
And Roddy Yagan.
Yes.
And Anthony Moen, yes. Site plan is approved five zero.
Thank you, sirs and ladies.
We can't wait to see what Aiman brings us next month.
Sarah, I promise you, you're gonna love it. Thank you.
So Aaron, that brings us to old business.
Uh, that's correct. Let me see here. Um. Just lost my agenda.
The winter garden.
Yes.
Yes.
PLPC twenty twenty-one ten. Uh, this is David Bryce's, uh, winter garden. The modifications to the, uh, atrium mall. Um, this is being presented tonight, I believe, by Brian Osterhout with EDP. Brian, are you on call?
I am.
All right, so whenever you're ready. Um, the planning commission last saw this, uh, in April. And, uh, declared lead agency at that time. Um, and issued a few comments, um, positively regarding the, the concept. But they're here for a more thorough review and, and public comment.
Aaron, any chance you can, uh, allow me screen sharing?
Uh, should still be enabled.
Let's see. Okay, bear with me for one second. Here we go. Can you guys see that?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, uh, thanks. Um, great to be with you tonight. Uh, again, my name is Brian Osterhout. With Environmental Design Partnership and, uh, as Aaron mentioned, we were before you, uh, back in April to present, uh, the original application to you. Since that time, uh, we continue to advance designs, uh, both on the architectural side, on the, in on the site side and, uh, the MEP side. So I just kind of bring you back up to speed. I know we have a new member of the planning commission tonight. So, um, I'll just spend two seconds kind of just running through the general, uh, you know, project overview. I don't want to spend a ton of time on this because I know we're already late in the agenda, but, um, it's, it's somewhat of a complex project. And in that, it's, um, it's, it's a couple of buildings between Fulton and Broadway and Third and Fourth in downtown Troy. I think many people are familiar, uh, with this location due to its, uh, uh, central kind of core location within the city of Troy. Uh, what's unique about this property is, as I mentioned, it's a couple of different buildings, but it's also bisected by property that is the city of Troy. Um, which is, uh, the glass portion of the atrium, the sidewalk, front, as you can see here. Um, you know, both on the west and on the east side. Um, and that, uh, city of Troy property is flanked to the north and to the south by the, uh, Uncle Sam Mall. Um, as shown here in yellow. And then we have the freer building, which is located, uh, in this blue shaded, a corner here. Uh, as I had mentioned back in April, uh, the freer building is largely staying, uh, as is. It's, uh, it's getting some ADA accessibility upgrades to it. Uh, they're replacing the skylight, um, in trying to reintroduce, uh, that open. Uh, site, um, concept back into the central staircase. But, uh, largely as a building, as you would see it on the street, it, it doesn't, it doesn't change all that much, uh, other than the ADA accessibility. Um, the northeastern section of the property does change considerably. Um, and I'll show you some, some renderings of this, but this becomes basically, uh, the northeast corner becomes a new four hundred plus or minus space parking garage. Um, that'll take the traffic from the Uncle Sam parking garage located north of this project. Um, that has some structural deficiencies and is rehabilitated and or, you know, redeveloped in the future at some later date. Um, what has changed since the last time you saw this project is originally, um, the applicant had CVS, who is currently located, uh, within the project. Core moving to this corner of Fulton and Fourth. Um, they have decided to stay put where they are and actually that kind of works out better from our design standpoint. Because, uh, the turning movements within the parking garage were, were tight to accommodate, uh, CVS on that first floor. And it gives us a little bit more room to do some maneuverability within the parking garage and add some additional first floor spaces. Um, you know, which, uh, you know, just, just, just helps traffic flow in general. Oh, and I should go back, um, down here in the bottom right, uh, Commissioner Wenger had brought up. Uh, kind of trying to get an idea of what the exterior facade of the parking garage might look like. Um, this is not the final product. This was a rendering that Hyman Hayes had done. Um, and I think one of the comments that came back from the applicant was, uh, you know, the, the shading looked a little bit dark. He wants to lighten this up a little bit, but I do know that that was one of the comments that came back from the last planning board meeting. So I, I did ask them for, um, an updated rendering of what that might look like. So it's still in flux, but, but that kind of gives you the general perspective. Again, some of the colors might lighten up and change, but you know, that's generally kind of the massing and, and, and look of it. Then as we progress down, you'll see some updated elevations. The top one being, uh, looking south from, from Fulton. Uh, and the bottom rendering, uh, looking west from Fourth Street. So, uh, generally, not much of this has changed, except, uh, where we had some grays before. And again, I, I show some comparison in the later slides, just to show what's, what's kind of changed between the last meeting and this meeting. It's, it's just some of the brick facade there. And then on the southern end of the property, on the Broadway side. Um, this is, uh, where a lot of the other change of the project occurs. Um, we're adding floors. Originally, the applicant in April had gone in with a six-story concept. Uh, had some difficulty with the heights there with, um. The elevator shouldn't so forth, so he actually reduced the height, uh, down to five stories. You'll, you'll see that as well. Wow, some flexibility and some, some greater MEP spaces up above the ceiling, um, and gives him a little more, more workability. It was getting a little tight to maintain us under the zoning requirement height of eighty feet. Again, these are some renderings. The, uh, one on the top right is the Broadway elevation. The southern, uh, viewing angle from Broadway. And, uh, then a partial Third Street elevation is, is located looking to the west below that. And you'll see that in this, uh, the, you know, the central concept of the city-owned property roughly remains the same. Um, what we'll get into some of the interior space, uh, uh, back and forth that, you know, we're currently working with the city of Troy on, on the, uh, operating agreements. And this is the overall site plan. Again, um, you know, the southern area here, uh, largely, uh, gets modified to five stories. Uh, we have the introduction of an outdoor, um, event seating space here called Quackenbush Square. Um, which we think will be, uh, you know, a nice addition to this. There'll be some underground parking below this as well, which is accessed from, from this curb cut. And, um, you know, again, the central core theme of the project, which is the atrium and the public space. And, you know, the Troy, uh, winter farmer's market, um, you know, is still maintained throughout this concept and working around it within the new spaces. Um, as I mentioned, you know, these outdoor spaces here that are currently owned by the city of Troy largely remain untouched. Obviously, we have to do slight modifications in here just for the curb cuts and ADA, uh, crosswalks and so forth. But, um, but you know, they relatively, uh, remain as is. So the changes since last meeting is that, uh, as I mentioned, we reduced the proposed building height by one story. It just, it, it worked better. Um, we were really running up against that, that height limitation. So I think the massing all fit in a little bit better down there. Um, CVS is staying in its current location, which again allowed us to expand the turning movements and parking within the first floor layout of the garage. And the, there are ongoing discussions, um, just kind of between Corporation Council and the applicant regarding enhancements and O and M agreements, uh, to the city's own space. Um, in terms of, you know, any modifications that are being done within that area. And we continued advanced detail plans. Uh, what I thought I would kind of show you is just some of the concepts between what was presented at the last meeting and then this meeting and this UK. This elevation doesn't change all that much, except for, um, some of the coloring and some of the exterior brickwork here on the Fulton Street elevation. Um, but, you know, the scale and the massing is, is all the same. That's the, uh, you know, the freer building on the right. Uh, the parking garage is on the left. This is, uh, Fourth Street elevations again, largely unchanged from the last meeting. Again, with just, uh, some of the coloring and, and, um, the, uh, exterior brickwork, um, shown on the newer concept on the bottom. The same thing here. Um, this, this is the Broadway elevation that I mentioned. We reduced one story here. So it, uh, doesn't have the height that the last concept elevation had. And you can see, uh, the architects. the architects mixing in some exterior brickwork and, and coloring to kind of give it more of an interest level rather than kind of that gray facade that was expansive throughout the Broadway elevation. This is the Third Street elevation. Looking at it again, six stories versus five, which is currently proposed. So helps with some of the massing. And then I had mentioned here, your two differences in the previous interior parking garage layout. So you could see here on the left, the previous version. It was awful tight. It did work to make the turning movements to get up to the other floors of the garage. But, you know, this certainly gives us a lot more room to work with and flexibility. The applicant's intent for this first floor space is to store some of the site equipment on here that he uses to maintain the property, at least for the foreseeable future, and then eventually turn this into retail space. You know, as the building gets leased out and, and occupied, you know, that's a nice valuable corner space. So at that point, I'll turn it back over to the commission for any comments or questions that you may have. I just kind of wanted to give an update on where we were progressing with this and provide the opportunity for comments. Work to submit detailed site plans relatively soon.
Thank you. Any commissioner comment?
Is there any intended action today on this, on this? Or is it just, you know, an update on where the project stands and what the design changes are?
I, I think that the, where things were left at the previous meeting was that the applicant would provide a little bit more color, which they did this evening, and the board would provide some more pointed comments for their final design. Or for their preliminary final design, I suppose. And then public comment, which I don't believe we had any at the previous meeting. So.
So, so will there be another opportunity to discuss this? Or is today the final discussion of that? Project?
It would be our, the city staff recommendation that no, no action be taken this evening.
Yeah, Roddy, I think at most we may declare ourselves lead agency. My understanding is I don't think we have sufficiently detailed site plans enough to.
Correct. No, lead agency was determined in April. You guys did declare yourself lead agency on this. The you do not have enough information at this point, in my opinion, to make a secret determination or to act on site plan approval. You're simply, they're, they're here for essentially a concept update. And again, I, public comment, I think would be.
Thing. Thank you.
Thanks for clarifying that, Aaron, because the staff report did say that we could declare ourselves lead agency tonight. I I also thought we'd done that, had done that already.
Yeah, Dash and I, yeah, we didn't catch that until after we had issued the staff report.
Great.
Has there been any discussion about construction space and basically where laydown would be, where instruction equipment would be placed? Has that already been talked about?
Uh, no, we had not discussed that at the last meeting. This project is going to be constructed by Turner. As far as I understand, you know, the, the majority of the deeper excavation work has to happen within the parkage for obvious reasons due to the structural supports necessary for that. So I would assume that that area will serve as, as kind of the staging laydown area in, you know, for the most part, because that's going to have the longest lead time in terms of construction work that, that goes on. But I certainly can, can talk with the applicant and come up with a staging and construction plan that I'm sure Turner can also chime in on.
Yeah. I would certainly like to see that. I think that the scale of this project is not one that Troy sees a lot of more so recently, but big replacement like that and doing deep foundation work seems like a lot of, you know, impacts to the local traffic and everything.
Yeah, if you want me to respond to that. Um, no, I mean, the, the intent actually is to do most of the work, obviously, within, you know, inside the building footprint to the extent possible. Obviously, there would have to be some sidewalk closures here and there as they move, you know, vehicles and are doing work adjacent to the sidewalk. So you have to come up with, you know, temporary pedestrian staging plans. But, you know, the majority of the work I, you know, is, is going to be from within the site itself. A lot of the foundation walls that exist along Broadway for the south portion of the mall are to remain, they're going to work within the existing structural columns that are currently there and enhance those. So you know, most of the deeper foundation work is probably going to be in the northeast corner underneath the parking garage. But, but yeah, your, your concerns are certainly valid.
Anyone else?
Any other staff comment?
This is Sarah. Of course, I'll say something. So I, I am reacting to the proposed facades and I have two one specific comment and, and one general comment. And the general comment is that this, like Roddy said, but in other words, this is the most significant project, in my opinion, that the city is going to see for a long time. And it and it is attempting to right some wrongs that many people believe have historically been done to the city that people have been waiting for for a really long time. And so I think it's really important that the next time we look at this project, it have much more detailed information. And, and I, I want to say appreciate everything you guys have done already to bring us along with you. But we really need to see detail and the facades need to be really easy to understand the, the building elevations. We get it conceptually, but we want to know materials and we, we want to understand the articulation of the facade. And so next time we see it, we want to see a near photorealistic representation of the project. The second point is much more specific. I, and it's a, it's a, an architectural critique of the truncated corner of the parking garage structure that's being proposed. I think that's really tricky. I think that it works successfully in buildings like the Rice Building. I don't know that it's going to work here. So I'm just expressing my, my reservations about it, especially on a parking garage. Parking garage needs to be beautiful. And I don't think it's beautiful. I, I'm much more confident about the other conceptual elevations. So that's what I wanted to share tonight. Oh, I'm sorry. There's one more thing. I'm really disappointed that CVS won't be there. It's been my CVS forever.
Well, they're still going to be in the building. They're just not going to be in that new corner. But yes, understood.
Hard. We're still, and, and don't let my comments over, you know, over shadow my enthusiasm for this project. Super excited about it.
Yeah, no, totally understand. As you know, I'm not an architect. I'm, I'm a boring engineer. So, but I can absolutely talk with the, with the architect and as, as many of you know, the applicant is an architect himself. So I know he's, he's put probably over a decade of thought into this. So I will certainly relate those comments to him and the architect and, you know, understand that, yeah, you guys obviously need to see, you know, you know, material selections and, you know, photorealistic, you know, elevations as this progresses.
And, and Brian, thank you. I appreciate it. And it's not just the five of us. I mean, I really mean that this is something that the city of Troy has been waiting decades for. And the, the rest of our community is going to, is really invested in this and is is going to have commentary either during this process or after the fact. So let's make sure that, that you're supplying them with everything they need to provide constructive criticism through this process. So you don't get it after the project's done.
I have a question use wise. Is there any discussion about rooftop commercial space? I see that it says upper floors are residential. Is there any sort of rooftop commercial space, restaurant space, anything?
No, not as it's currently proposed. The, the retail slash commercial activity takes place on the first and second floors other than within the freer building itself. Within the freer building, you do have, you, you do have a mix, although you have professional offices mostly on the upper floors of the freer as well. I don't know. Yes, I don't believe, you know, I, I, I don't know where the applicant is. I do know he has a lot of interest in this project. I do know he has spoken with at least one, if not more restaurants regarding look, you know, eating here. So we do show a restaurant space on the first floor. That's just under 5,000 square feet. And then obviously we have some of that outdoor seating as well. Don't know that there has been a restaurant that expressed interest in any of the upper floors. I'm sure the applicant would entertain that idea if, if that was. But generally, you're correct. The, the residences were considered for the third, fourth and fifth floors. With commercial and office primarily being, you know, in public space being within the first and second floors.
Gotcha. Thanks. Yeah, I'm only asking from a somewhat selfish perspective. I've always wished Troy had more rooftop kind of places to go, but.
This is Suzanne. I just wanted to second what Sarah was saying regarding the importance and the the importance of the product, of the project in general and the importance of the architecture. I understand how hard it is to work with existing structures, especially the glass part that Troy owns. But I'm just hoping that a special level of care is, is given to the materials and the design on the parking garage. I would hate to see something that looked like Uncle Sam's, you know, tacked on the end there. I've seen pictures of parking garages that people have done in various cities that were beautiful. And I'm hoping we get the same kind of thing here.
Hi, this is Dash Christner, just with the planning department. I just have two specific questions for Brian. The first one is, is that Quackenbush Square portion of the project accessible to the public? And the second question is, if you could offer any additional details on the skylight replacement at the freer building? I understand there's significant damage and wear and tear and water coming in from that space, but I, I do know it is quite a historically important space to the city. Thank you.
Yeah, sure. Thanks, Dash. I appreciate the comments and, and, and then the questions. Yes, Quackenbush Square is intended to be a public space. It's going to serve a couple of different functions. One would be, it will have an extension for some outdoor seating adjacent to the restaurant. But I also know the applicant, you know, is fully invested in, you know, the farmer's market consciousness, you know, and the use of the public space within this realm. And so he, he also sees that as an extension that can be used during those times as well. But it's really, yes, it is intended to be more of an outdoor plaza use area by the public for sure. As it relates to your second comment, architecturally, I know you are correct that there, let me, let me share my screen again, because I had a rooftop view, bear with me, of, from the last presentation of the, of the freer building and what we were doing there. Actually, it was an isometric view. Yes, it, it is that, that is a listed historic building. So any changes that would go on with the freering as it relates to the skylight. I, I think he's just, you know, redoing it somewhat as is. I don't think there's any massive changes to that. There's nothing, you know, architecturally that he's changing there. He just really wants to fix it. Just trying to see if I have a good view of it. And you can't really see it in that aerial. But, but yeah, he's not, he, he's not proposing to do any serious expansion of that or anything like that. I think he's just looking to rehab that existing skylight that's kind of in the central portion.
Great. Thank you.
Sure.
I don't know if this commission has any authority when it comes to naming. Where did Quackenbush Square come from? Because I know we already have Quackenbush Square in Albany. Just curious how that name got assigned here as well.
To be honest with you, I, the applicant came up with the naming convention. I don't know the answer to that question, but I will come prepared with an answer for you next time on that. I'll have to check with him. But it's a, it's a prevalent name. He not only names the space, the Quackenbush Square, but he's calling it the Troy Winter Garden at Quackenbush Square. So he must have a reason for that naming convention. I just honestly don't know. And normally the applicant's on, but he's, his flight, he's traveling today and his flight got shifted on him. And so he's in the air.
I do know that Quackenbush, the Quackenbush building is right across the street. So that's probably part of it.
This is James Rath in the planning department. The, the Historic Review Commission did review this previously, but the plan has changed significantly since then. I, I would think it would be appropriate for it to go back to the Historic Review Commission once you do have those detailed renderings and materials specifically regarding the comments that Suzanne and Sarah made with the parking garage corner. I'm sure they would want to see that and provide comment.
Sure. Yep. Completely understand.
Um, I was also wondering if you had any of the adjacent structure, the elevations of any of the adjacent structures handy?
The height of the adjacent structure surrounding the Third and Fourth Street and Fulton and Broadway block, so to speak?
Yeah. I mean, if you had any of the, you know, the higher buildings, I know you're concerned with the, you know, working around the height, meaning the ZBA or the zoning requirements here. So I'm just curious if you had any of those offhand.
And I, I don't have surveyed elevation of that. We actually did fly this building with our drone. So we do have some aerial shots that I could probably estimate heights from and create some point clouds from that in terms of Google Earth. You know, this will give you perspective of some of the building heights within the area. So this is, this is Broadway right here. So right now that's two stories. We're adding three stories. So as you can see, it, you know, it certainly becomes taller. This is one, two, three, four stories, five stories back here.
I can't, I can't see your screen. I don't know if anybody else can.
No, we're not seeing your screen, Brian.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hold on.
I know, I know the, the Quackenbush building is quite prominent. I mean, personally, I'm not concerned with the height. I, I'm just interested to know how it, how to fit.
Yes. So I think you can see it now. It says in sharing it. So, right. So, so this is the, this is the Broadway elevation, looking at the current two-story configuration here. So obviously, you know, we're, we're adding three stories, but you could see that generally within this corridor, I, I think it, you know, it, it, I don't think it's going to stick out like a sore thumb. You know, I think it's generally consistent and framed by some of the larger buildings and it's, you know, neat, you know, kind of the neighborhood vernacular. I don't think it's, you know, it's anything that means shoot it up in, into the sky much more so. much more so than anything around it. It's slightly taller than the freer building. But you you know, just looking around as I can kind of zoom in and zoom out.
That that's great. Yeah, I I don't think it'll stick out either from what you've described. Of course, it's not up to me. The last thing I was gonna bring up is we we have been, you know, I guess, attention has been draw drawn to the agreement regarding the atrium, the public portion of the atrium. And, you know, we we've been, I've been really interested to hear, you know, about the public bathroom and and access and understanding that some of those things have not been consistent throughout throughout time. And I'm sure you'll you'll continue to work with the Corporation Council. And perhaps this is more of a question for Andy if whether or not that the terms of that agreement are are relevant in in this hearing with the planning commission.
And and I think they are. It's a very unique situation based upon a site plan where the city property is literally in the middle of 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 the project. So clearly, what is going to or what is not going to occur in that space is definitely relevant to the to the planning commission's analysis.
Yeah, and just to further that, I do know the applicant is, you know, aware of that and and trying to work back and forth with Corporation Council on that. So, you know, it's kind of out of my purview. But I do know he's aware of it and, you know, needs to finalize that with the city.
Great. I would just state that, you know, I I understand, again, there's there's supposed to be a publicly accessible bathroom. And I think some publicly accessible space, if I recall correctly, it was seven days a week, nine to five. You know, we don't have to get into the details of it right now. I just wanted to express how valuable that that is, that could be to our downtown, to our city, people visiting and people who live here. It's a much needed space. So I, you know, just want to draw attention to that for the planning commission to to be considering that as we consider this project moving forward.
I'm sure this has already been discussed. The parking on the northeast corner and the number of spaces. Is that intended to serve only those commercial and residential spaces within the building? Or is it also meant to provide additional parking spaces basically for use to the rest of the surrounding, you know, area?
Ye- ye- yes, a kind of combination of both. So one thing that we had talked about at the previous planning board meeting, which I'm sorry, I should have mentioned because I know you weren't there, is Commissioner Wanger brought up, you know, what is happening with the Uncle Sam parking garage. So, you know, obviously, that that serves a current function. And, you know, that that can't either be rehabilitated or or redeveloped until, you know, additional parking is provided. So, you know, the intent of this parking garage surely is to function, you know, to to, you know, to serve, obviously, the the tenants of this building, but also to provide additional parking and and surplus parking that, you know, would currently be provided by the Uncle Sam parking garage such that I I think I use the analogy at the last meeting. You know, you kind of have to walk before you run. So this is the first step, you know, to to displace that number of parking spaces. You have to build this first and 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 then, you know, the applicant who also owns that property could, you know, potentially rethink or redo what he's going to do over there.
Thank you.
If there are no other commissioner comments, I, we can move on to public comment. Although, Aaron, if we're going to be having this project back on the agenda in the future once more detailed plans are available, do we need to take public comments?
Well, you know, as a having, having worked in land development, if if there's a change that's going to come about based on public comment, I would probably want to know about it now rather than later. So if the plan is to have these guys fully engineer something and then the public comes out and they don't like one thing about it and you want them to go back and re-engineer the whole project because that, no, I think now would be the time.
That's reasonable. Are there any members of the public here tonight? I'm not seeing any hands. Are you ready?
No, no, I don't believe anyone's here for this. I think I think the next agenda item might have.
A few people to comment? All right, then, in that case, I think that the only thing we can do is motion to table this agenda.
Brian, is the plan to have a more complete set of drawings for for next month? Or do you guys think it's going to take you longer than that?
Yeah, so on the site side, I, you know, I think we're in pretty good shape. You know, I I think we're within probably, you know, a week or so of submitting that. You know, obviously, you know, some of the language has to get worked out with Corporation Council. But, you know, aside from that, from a technical, you know, review standpoint for for planning and and site plan, you know, that 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 certainly could keep the ball rolling. So our intent would be to submit this, you know, in in short order in in terms of the site plan and then, you know, continue to have the architect advance the renderings for the for for the board's review.
Great. So so then what I'll do is I'll reach out to you. We'll get the escrow set up for for third-party engineering review. You 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 get me the site plans. We'll have send it out for review. And then perhaps for the for next month, what we can do is have this on the agenda with fully engineered site or mostly full engineered site plans and then and engineering comment as well. And that might make it a more productive meeting.
Perfect.
And then the the, as far as the ownership, I I I don't know that that's a, I don't think that's a large enough item to to slow the, slow the project down, so the planning commissions read that. There are just some minor, it's just some minor encroachments on the land and and, you know, we have to go through that process.
Sounds good.
So then what we're looking for at this point is a motion by the, one of the commissioners to adjourn this matter. Am I correct, Aaron, understanding that the applicant would want the matter adjourned to the July 17 meeting? Or I'm sorry, it's July 21st?
July 20, July 21st, correct.
This is Sarah. I I'm not yet ready to make a motion. I would like to ask a question, maybe to Andy, maybe to Aaron, maybe to Anthony. It is unlikely that I will be participating in that meeting. And as you know, I am particularly concerned about the the expression of the building with the elevations, which is not to say that I'm not concerned with the cycling. But I would like to make a request that the project not, the site plan not be approved without my participation. That perhaps the proposed site plan be reviewed and critiqued at the next meeting. Is that possible?
I I I think it would be unlikely the applicant or this project would be in a position for an approval at the next meeting. If that alleviates your concern.
I I would also add, Sarah, that if 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 your specific request is that they not take action because you won't be at the next meeting, that that request would be directed to your fellow commissioner members and it would be completely in within their discretion to honor your request or or ignore your request.
Okay.
I'd have no problem with that request, Sarah. My one thought on that is that considering that I I suspect you'll have some substantive comments once there are more detailed plans, whether it wouldn't be more productive to just adjourn it to the following month when we know that you will be present. I'm not sure. That would be a better use of everyone's time.
And then, thank you, Anthony. And I would defer to Brian to make that decision, unfortunately.
We can probably, we we could probably discuss that offline as to whether or not the applicant wants to present without a key member of the planning commission available that, you know, obviously, that's they understand what they would be be doing if they showed up to that meeting without without you there. So.
Thank you, everyone.
So now we're waiting on a motion to table unless any other commissioners or members of the public have anything.
Yes, exactly.
So motion to table?
Second, excuse me, second.
And just to clarify, Roddy, is that a motion just to table indefinitely or are we specifically tabling to a date certain?
I would provide a motion to table it until next month's meeting.
Okay, and we had a second, so we'll go to a vote.
Well, let me clarify. I would like to make sure that Sarah is there, so I can't second that anymore.
Just, just, just a quick question. Procedurally, you you can just, I think, and I don't want to speak for the attorney or Aaron, but I I think you can just choose to put it, we have to get information into the city. And then, as Aaron had mentioned, we could, you know, potentially, you know, discuss the timeline, you know, at another time.
It's a noticing issue, Brian, is all, is what this goes on to. If it, they table it to a date certain, we do not have to renotice, even if the item is
Gotcha, okay.
Heard, but then even pulled from the next agenda because nothing new to present or whatever. You know, from a city staff perspective, it's easier to adjourn these to the next meeting. But sometimes it doesn't make sense if you guys have to go back to drawing board here. It it's a progression.
So, yeah, I mean, sorry. No, I was just gonna say, can we make it a motion to only table until we've collectively agreed that it's ready to be presented again? Or I don't know how that works. Does it have to be decided right now as to when specifically date wise?
For noticing convenience and to save the cost of publication, if you adjourn it to next month's meeting, it it doesn't have to be renoticed, republished. At next month's meeting, you could then choose not to act upon it and kick it over to August. Completely up to you.
Or, or, yeah, and 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 to that end, obviously, we're just trying to, you know, keep the project moving forward and un-understand that Commissioner Wang's comments, you know, are are vital to this. As as I think Aaron had mentioned, you know, I don't, I don't think the applicant, you know, has an expectation of getting approved next month while Commissioner is away. But certainly, we could at least solicit comments and keep acting on those in the in the interim.
I am totally comfortable with that. Thank you, Brian. Don't, I don't want to hold things up. I just don't want a vote to happen without me.
It's summer. People are not here all the time. I get it. It it happens.
I'll go ahead and set and second this.
Okay, great. So going to a vote, Barbara Higbee?
Yes.
Suzanne Spellin?
Yes.
Sarah Winger?
Yes.
Roddy Yagan?
Yes.
And Anthony Moan, yes, the this item is adjourned to the July 21st meeting.
Thanks, everyone, for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, too.
The 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 next item on the agenda is PLPC 202114. While while the name sounds familiar, King's Landing 2, this is in fact a new application. Given how much attention this application had the first go-around, I thought it might be worth starting with with Andy, not to put you on the spot here. But what, if anything, from the previous process, can the planning commission consider? Are they, do they need to act as if they've never seen this before and ask all the same questions again? Or can they essentially pick up where they left off with the previous application?
Okay, first, let let me step back slightly and and talk about where we are procedurally. The prior application, if you remember, we went through the environmental assessment form and the the process ended up resulting in a positive declaration under seeker, which would require the submission of environmental impact statement. Subsequent to that action by the commission, the applicant completely withdrew the application. So that seeker process has been terminated by the applicant's removal of of the of the action itself. Subsequent to that, they have submitted a new application for what they deem a a new project that is substantially different from the prior project. That being said, process-wise, you are starting for seeker purposes back at the beginning of the seeker process. There had, there is no lead agency declared at this point. Moving forward, you would review it as de novo project. However, recognizing the level of input, attention and analysis that was provided to the prior project, I I don't think you can view this one in a vacuum. That project has to be taken into consideration. I suspect the applicant will dust off the reports and analyses that were provided for that one and and rework them and resubmit them as part of this process. But for seeker purposes, you are back at the beginning of the process. And tonight is the introduction of a a de novo, a new project. The fact that the project has changed will not, as we go through forward in the seeker process, change your ability to land on the same place you did last time in terms of the potential for significant adverse environmental impacts. That being said, we're we're very, we're back at the beginning, at the very beginning of the seeker process and the review process.
All right. Thank you, Andy. I hope that's helpful, commissioners. Anthony, do you want to start with the presentation?
Yes, absolutely.
Good evening. I'm gonna share my screen. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, great. Good evening. My name is Cosmo Marfioni. I'm the president and managing partner of the B C Group. I'd like to congratulate Chairman Moan for his new appointment and welcome Commissioner Yagan to the board. Looking forward to working again with you, with the with the commissioners. So tonight, what we want to do is is just reintroduce, introduce a new project. As as Aaron alluded to, we did, we we are using a lot of the same reports and analysis that we've, that we've worked on for the last 18 months. So I appreciate your time and your patience as we go through the, go through some, you know, introductions to this project and some additional studies that that we've been working on for the last couple of months. Okay, just to go through real quick, we'll talk about some project highlights. And then with me tonight will be Uh, and then, uh, with me tonight will be, uh, George Olson, who is the project architect, who will go through, uh, the, 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 uh, the, uh, his, his inspiration on, on his design. A lot of work done with renderings and materials and, and elevations. Uh, and then I'll pick it back up and briefly talk about some of the other studies that we completed that you've, uh, uh, on the existing structures. Uh, a, a brief analysis of the current zoning and vision plan, an economic analysis and conclude with some, uh, with a benefit and, uh, and our action, uh, you know, what we want the board to, uh, to, to, to vote on tonight. So real quick, uh, the project's located northeast corner of New Federal Street and Fifth Avenue in the B4 Central Commercial Zoning District. Uh, we, we have 62 residential apartment units. Uh, the plans have been worked out to be 10 one bedrooms, units and 52 two bedrooms. There'll be 62 indoor parking spaces, uh, five outdoor parking spaces in, um, you'll see, I'll show you the site plan in, 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 uh, in the alley. Uh, the, the, the retail is, is still around 2,100 square feet. Our goal is to activate the New Federal Street sidewalk and, and also propose to rehabilitate and activate the, the, uh, empty piece of land at the intersection of Jacob and Fifth Avenue that is currently owned by the City of Troy into 38 new parking spots for the community. And, uh, eventually, we'll, we'll be contributing six more parking spots of the New Federal Street corridor when, um, when, when that plan, uh, that the city is currently working on, it goes into, uh, effect. This is the site plan as, um, as, as, you know, as alluded before, we're at the intersection of New Federal and Fifth. This is the, uh, if you see my arrow, hopefully you do, this is the, uh, proposed, uh, improvement to the, to the lot on Fifth and Jacob, uh, with 38 parking spots. Point, I like to point out some of the traffic circulation, um, from the building. We've, uh, we have a, we have a two, two levels of parking, one totally on the ground and another one that is, uh, half below grade on, of Fifth and the other half above the Fifth Avenue grade. The, the lower level parking will be accessed, uh, through Laundry Place, uh, right down a ramp where my arrow is, my arrowhead is, and then, uh, the upper level parking will be accessed uh, on a ramp that, um, that goes in between the, the church property and our property. Uh, and, and circulation will essentially go up and down this ramp. We've decided not to have any traffic go onto Fifth. There'll be some bollards located here and this cur, this will be currently, uh, be used, uh, for emergency purposes only. We've decided that all circulation will come from the New Federal Street, uh, on through King, through Laundry Place and whether, uh, whether cars will be going downstairs uh, to the parking level or off the ramp to the upper level and then at, back out again onto Laundry Place and out, uh, Federal. Uh, in terms of utilities, we've submitted a full site plan. Not much really changed from the, uh, from the previous application in terms of uh, location of, uh, utilities, the sewer and, uh, storm will, will be in the same spot. We're probably going with the sewer on, no, not probably, we will be connecting to the sewer on Fifth Avenue and the storm on Laundry Place. There's an existing, uh, new, uh, main that was provided by our, that was installed by us, uh, from our first project, which will service the, the new project, um, that it, that is along, uh, the sidewalk here, uh, on New Federal Street. Uh, utilities, obviously, uh, we have electric and gas that'll come in from Fifth. Um, so that, that, that's, that's how we're gonna get our electric and, um, gas utilities. So I want to just bring it over to George. George, are you, um, are you there in TV land? Can you, uh?
Well, I'm here. I'm here in audio.
In audio land, okay. Go ahead, George. I'll be, I'll be your, uh, you tell me next and I'll keep on going.
Okay. Uh, George Olson, Olson Associates Architects in Saratoga Springs. We went back through the several meetings that we've had over the last couple of years and comments that people offered during those meetings. And we tried to list six or seven of the main areas of concern. And I'm talking about architectural here, not the necessarily all of the parking issues and things like that, but, uh, basically how the building and the site and the context work. And, uh, we came up with six main areas of concern and this first, um, I'm gonna jump around a little bit, but this first slide that, uh, Cosmo just put up shows in the red, the previous submission that we had, the last submission that we had, which was a five-story building, uh, along Fifth Avenue and along Federal Street. And you can see, basically, we overlaid and read what the old submission was and you can see our proposed submission in the background. Uh, but of the comments that we went through, the six that we pulled out that were the most common and have the most weight were, one of them was that the mass of the five-story, the five-story building along Fifth Avenue and up against the church was too massive for the neighborhood. And you can see, and I'll explain, I'll keep going and explain our proposed plan further, but you can see on, uh, the drawing above, which is along Fifth Avenue, the east elevation of the building, that we've significantly reduced the mass along Fifth Avenue. Um, the second issue was the parking at the first floor. We had a parking lot at the first, basically indoor parking at the first floor and a parking one full floor below grade. That first floor, the parking people commented, and rightly so, was it diminished the residential character of the street. It basically was a blank wall at the first floor that although it had architectural treatment and fenestration, it really didn't contribute to the character of the street the way the buildings on the opposite side of the street do with the porches and direct access into the unit. Um, and I'll explain that later. I think we, we've gone a long way to satisfying that concern. There is no parking visible from the street and as you can see from this rendering, which will be enlarged later, there are entrances now to the units off of Fifth Avenue. Um, which brings me to the second point. Uh, one of the, many of the comments said the buildings on the opposite side of the street are very residential. They all have a front door. They all have a porch or patio or stoop system with railings and those were void on our last proposal. Our last proposal was the four and five-story facade along the street, although we tried to articulate that to break down the mass, it still didn't represent like the row houses that currently occupy the opposite side of the street, the east side of the street. Uh, the fourth point that we pulled out was the four to five-story architectural character. And then, and that's, this is what I just alluded to, and that row house articulation, people think didn't work. It just wasn't similar enough. It rep, it didn't, although intended to break down the mass, it was still a four to five-story building along Fifth Avenue. Um, the fifth comment was, there were, and there were a number of comments, and a lot of these comments were earlier on, that, um, the bulk should be moved to Federal Street. This was more, a larger building with the 62 units. It really didn't belong on Fifth Avenue and it was much more appropriate. And there were a number of comments in the beginning that says, I'm not concerned at all of how tall it is on Federal Street. That's a more, it's a larger street. It can take a taller building, a more massive building. So you'll see that we've shifted that mass away from the Fifth Avenue side to Federal Street. And the last, um, point, which I think Cosmo touched on, was that we had the parking entrance on the north side, which abutted the church and we pulled the building out above that parking entrance. So the building essentially was on our lot line up against the church. And you can see what we've done here is that is a, an open space area. We, as Cosmo alluded to, we have a fence there with bollards. You cannot drive in. That's access only for emergency or national grid access in the future. And so the building is now set back from the church about 20 feet. And you can see that it's a two and a half story building, not a five-story. So essentially, what we've done is this project has evolved and is really more of a Federal Street project now with a mass move. Like I said, the mass is now on the busier street. You come over the bridge, the Federal Street corridor, and we think it's much more appropriate. The building has gone in order to keep the, that bulk low on Fifth Avenue. It's gone, a portion of the building has gone to eight stories, but a portion of the building, like I said, has been greatly reduced on Fifth Avenue, both in height and length and mass of that building. So those were the major points that we walked away from and I'll kind of run through. Cosmo called it inspiration. We call it kind of context analysis and, uh, people had a lot of comments about the articulation, like I said, and what a row house was and what a row house wasn't, and we were not presenting the row. So we did a little bit of, uh, actually a fair amount. We walked around Troy, took some photographs, used photographs out of archives and things like that. And this is just the representation of the kinds of things that we saw. And you can see the upper right-hand photograph is much more decorative, much more articulated, although if you look at those closely, with the exception of color, they're almost identical facades. So I would call that a very ornate row house. The row house, the, or the photograph on the bottom right-hand corner shows more of what typically historically would have been called an ordinary row house. It, you know, it was less art, less articulated, less decorated, but still had that same character. And the other two photographs are just kind of examples of just the variety of things we'll see in Troy and frankly, other cities in row house construction. But one thing that's common to those that you'll see and that we talk about is the front stoops, the, um, pieces of the building, the oriole windows and canopies and the stoops that project out into the street. And I'll go back to our plan a little later, but we've pushed our building back from the street to allow for those, um, stoops and actually front porches and landscaped areas in front of the units. Next, and on the commercial side, we like to think of it as the row house portion, which goes down Fifth Avenue and then the Federal Street, which is a larger, more appropriate, larger scale to Federal Street. We started looking at some of the buildings around town and, you know, I think we heard a lot of comments that, you know, the building, you know, the architecture, the traditional architecture, we should look at that, and we did. And we also know from our background that these buildings traditionally have, they're a three-part building. It has a cap or a top. It has a middle section and it has a base. And you can see in the, I, I don't know whether people can read that, but basically there's a cornice at the top which provides a cap to the building. There's a strong middle section. Um, there was a couple of comments that said, oh, our windows were too uniform, but you can see in that middle field, uniformity of window size and scale is not uncommon to, uh, and in fact, we have a little bit more variety than some of them. And then you have, there's an entablature, which is the piece above the base that runs around the building horizontally above Cosmo, right above the, above the, yeah, right there, which is a demarcation of the base versus the middle of the building. And that's very strong. If you go to the next slide, you'll see that. And again, some buildings are more articulated and more decorative and other buildings are more plain, but they carry this common theme, which again is a classical architectural common theme. It's not significant to just Troy. It, it's one of the architectural vocabularies throughout history. But you can see that they vary, but there's still a strong top. There's still a middle and there's still a base. Um, go ahead. And again, as going back to the analysis, we, we kind of just, we went out and, uh, used the drone, took some aerial photographs of things that were there. This one, I think, is actually from Google Earth. And we looked at the context of what's really around us. We, we centered so much on the fact that this was a a brownstone row house neighborhood, and I think that we lost sight of the fact that this, the context of this area has some very large buildings in it. You can see just to the south of us the, and I'm not sure what that is, the medical building across the street is 92 feet. A portion of it's 92 feet, the majority of it's 83, 84 feet. Um, the church below that is 63 feet. The buildings directly to the, on the opposite side of, um, right there on the opposite side of the buildings on Fifth Avenue is a tall monolithic residential building. It's 67 feet. The towers across the street from that, well, that tower's 183, which is not even, uh, consistent with the neighborhood, but there's 60, those buildings right there range from 68 to 75 feet. And then as you move north, you see the brick building there. That's 7, 69 feet. There's the roof of the church is 70 feet and then, uh, the building that you would be in tonight is 118 feet. So, and I think along the, the guidelines for the Federal Street corridor is exactly that. Larger buildings move the mass there and then they get smaller as it goes away from the main artery. So that's what exists. Okay. Our proposal is you can see on the east elevation, which is, these are basically, uh, repeated drawings of what I showed before with the red. Um, you can see we've moved the mass all the way over to Federal Street and then we have the row houses along Fifth Avenue. And it's important to note, which you'll see later on another streetscape drawing, the buildings across the street on Fifth Avenue basically start at that third row house. Can, you can see it right there. The top drawing is our proposed streetscape. You can see our building with the attached row houses, the church, and then other buildings as it goes down the street. The superimposed blue on the second drawing down is the silhouette of the buildings across the street. So you can see that the row houses that we're proposing, the row house portion of the building that we're proposing are consistent, either similar height or smaller than some or lower than some of the buildings across the street. And then as you jump down page farther, that's the streetscape along Federal Street. And the top one is our streetscape looking north along Federal Street and you could see King's One on the left, our proposed building, the buildings, the row houses on Fifth Avenue, and then as it steps up to as it moves up toward RPI. And again, the drawing below that Cosmo's just enlarged, if you look at the blue in that, that's the silhouette of what's across, directly across the street. And as you look directly across the street from our proposed building and of King's Landing One, you can see that larger 92-foot building there and the massing of the other building next. foot building there and the massing of the other building next to it are not, on, our, our building is not inconsistent with what's going on, on Federal Street. And I think it shows the analysis is that's where it should be. So let's go to the next one, and I'll kind of go through these quickly and then, uh, and the next one is the renderings that we, we've got a series of renderings just to show that we've remodeled this. And you can see on this, again, as we talked about, we had, similar to what our last proposal was, the building is brick. Um, it does have different materials and different colors at the top at the cap. And the main field of the building is brick. And we've introduced some intermediate banding and things like that. And then there's a strong base to the building with retail and glass along there. Again, this was to borrow elements of traditional architecture, not to repeat them or copy them, but to use those same elements of mass and scale. And this rendering number two shows that clear and rendering, no, go ahead. You can go to run rendering number three, shows that clear demarcation of Federal Street building and the lower portion of the row houses that continues down Fifth Avenue. And you can see here, it shows some variety of windows and bump outs and the porches and the stoops and the different cornice types. And again, what's different here than some of the typical row houses you'll see is we have the larger windows for the living rooms and things like that. If you looked at some of those other one, other photographs that we had of some of the context and samples around, you might see very, the same windows, like in that middle elevation right there that is presented as the red brick, those would be in the bottom level, those might be living room windows. But we have that variation of bedroom and living room. And you can also see on this, but go back to that one, there is no parking level that can be seen. In fact, the middle building has some basement level windows, similar to what you'll find, some of the, the row houses around the city. Keep going, Cosmo. Um, this is a view from the north, from the church. You can see that the brick building we, in the background, that is about a hundred feet back from the more brownish facade that is shown here with the windows on it, which abuts the church. And again, that facade's twenty feet back from the church's property. So it's twenty feet back and it's only a two and a half story building. Again, you don't, there's no parking visible from that. And this is another view from, which is similar to the opening view that Cosmo showed, showing Kings One at five stories and our proposed building along Federal Street at eight stories and the retail along the first level and the, the top and the cap. So what are the next one? And these are the plans from the building. And Cosmo already talked about the two levels of parking and the sixty-two indoor parking spaces, um, one for each unit. And basically what happens is that first level parking is half above and half below grade, as Cosmo indicated. So on the left-hand side of the drawing up at the top, you'll see the retail, which is that grade, which ends up having about a fourteen foot high ceiling. And then you'll take an elevator that can do a half a stop up to the next floor, and then the parking area would have a ramp into the lobby and then the lower level parking. And then on the right, you will see the first and second floor, what we call the first and second floor, the first floor above the parking. And we do connect to that row house, but you can see on the bottom drawing the entrance porches and the front stoops and things. And you can see that we pushed the building back from the property line significantly. And there'll be grass area vegetation in there as well as a little gate and the stoops. But the building will be connected, will have one elevator, common stairs and things. So the building will have access to the mailroom and the lobby and everything else. And if you jump to the next drawing, it shows what happens from floors three through eight above. And that's where the tower is. And again, if you look at the two, go to the right, you bring your mouse over to the right and straight. And where the bump out, no, where the bump out of the first floor is there, those porches right down below. That's about where the buildings across the street start, right here, yeah. So we have, so you can see that significantly, we've moved that bulk of the building only opposite the parking on Fifth Avenue. It doesn't come close to residential buildings opposite the street. And the two sections that we drew there give you indication. The top one is a cross section on the right is Fifth Avenue, and it's just showing the porch steps. It's about six feet up, five and a half to six feet up from the street. And that would be the porches. And then the lower section is a section through, basically parallel to Fifth Avenue. And it shows the lobby down on the first floor and the two levels of parking and the two levels of the row houses. And then the, the eight stories. Keep going, Cosmo. And then again, these are the elevations in more detail. And I know you probably can't read all the notes and everything, but similar to our last project, the bulk, actually, we've included more. The bulk of the building now is almost entirely brick, with the exception of the top section and some banding that you'll see going around, which would be a fiber cement board of a different color, different panel system. And then the corner was always the glass lobby and elevator area going up. And we still have the balcony bump outs. And they're, for the most part, Romeo and Juliet type balconies, um, which give the building a little bit of verticality there. And just on the renderings, you saw the color and things that we added the last time. Um, this is the west elevation of the building. So on the right-hand side, we have a small tower of glass on the corner. And then the brick returns down laundry place. And then when the building steps way back, we change materials to a panel system and a different color back there. And then the lower level, the parking, we've shown that some, the same as what we did on Kings One. It's a vertical metal siding and we used the charcoal gray color. Nice and clean, and you can see the entrance to the lower level parking there. This is the church side, the north elevation. And like I said, the building in the background, the lighter color brick is about a hundred feet away from that facade that you're seeing, the darker brick facade. And we bring the, the cornice and the corbeling of the brick around the side of the building. And we've got windows on the side of the building. So it is much more of a row house type facade and mass that the church will see. I can. We did a study of, um, views, people, I think one of the concerns was that the building blocked the river view from, uh, as you went from east to west, looking from up toward RPI and Federal Street down toward the river. And on what we're showing you here, if you look at the small inset on the bottom, that little green triangle is actually where the photograph is taken from. And then the photograph is the actual pedestrian view that you're looking. And you can see, and, and I won't go through each one in total detail, but in, just in this first A, you can see that if you were standing on Federal Street, that building that's sixty-seven, sixty-eight feet tall will considerably probably block most of the new building, and we will be in line with that. So your view is down right there, you're, you know, your view will not be blocked by our building of the river. Your view is already blocked by that building. So our building basically has no impact on these views from the east to the west, or very little. Okay, go to the next one. And then these are other various, that's from up on top of the hill. If you get up near RPI and I think even with the vegetation, but you can see in the background there, uh, the view is very small and you won't even be able to really see our building. Go ahead. And this is a view, this one actually is looking the other way, looking north, I think, isn't it? Oh, no, it's on the opposite street, north of the big tower, which really just shows the scale of that large tower. And our view, our building wouldn't come into play in this view anyway. And this is a little bit farther up on Federal. So you're looking down and everything would basically block our building. And what Cosmo's pointing at is across the river. So that's not even on our side of the river, so. And that view would not be impacted by our building. So what we did next was we flew the area with a drone and we tried to superimpose the mass of our proposed building in relationship to what is in that area and what I originally showed. And you can see the building that Cosmo with a white roof that he just had his cursor on is, like I said, that the portion of that building is ninety-two feet. Our building is ninety-three feet. Kings One is a little over sixty feet. That brick building, the triangular brick building in the background is about seventy feet. And the building to the right that we talked about before was, is almost seventy feet. I think it's sixty-eight or sixty-seven feet. So the building is not out of character with the neighborhood, and I don't think it's out of character with Federal Street. And these are just more views. And you can actually see that that building across the street is, is a larger building in mass than what we're proposing. And this is a building, which is tough to see with the roofs and anything, but you can see the relationship of the two and a half story portion to the buildings directly across the street, the residential buildings. And then how we've pushed the mass of the building out toward Federal Street, right across from the parking lot that's there. And again, another view from looking down. And what I was trying to say before was as you're looking down Federal Street, we wouldn't block that view of looking down Federal Street. And by the time you get up farther, the vegetation and those other buildings actually block your view of, or would significantly be in front of our building. And I'll let Cosmo take it from here.
So what we did is, um, and, and I apologize because you've already heard most of this. So I'll breeze through it, at least for this first meeting. We did, we did do a, um, preservation study of the existing buildings, uh, that dilapidated buildings that are on Fifth Avenue. Um, they're, they're not on the national registry. Um, and, uh, and, 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 and we, we did a property condition assessment of the building. Uh, and just to see what it would take to, uh, to salvage the, either all of them, all of it, or parts of, of the, the building. The more, uh, the, you know, the, the preservationist and, and it's George, uh, George's team went in and we, we figured the best, uh, thing to do if we wanted to salvage the building was to try to salvage the original portions of the building at the front and not all the annexes that were added, uh, throughout the years in the rear, because they're, they're severely out of code and, uh, and, and they're really, really in, in poor shape as opposed to some of the, the front original one are in poor shape and not as bad as the, as the rear ones, the rear portion of the building. Um, so we, we, we did that. We've also taken a look at, uh, again, compliance. George did a lot, spent a lot of time, uh, and I, uh, and the whole team spent a lot of time looking at the vision plan and the zoning, making sure that we were compliant with the entire vision plan. Uh, and our project is, uh, you know, is promoting, uh, is in the city center as a, you know, high dense, high density project. Um, we, we've, uh, we are promoting, uh, you know, I, uh, an opportunity for, uh, for some retail at the bottom. Uh, we're promoting, uh, you know, even though we have, we, we have parking, uh, it's not required, uh, so we, we are promoting, uh, you know, population growth. Some of the other items that we looked at is, uh, is, you know, I encourage diversity of the housing stock, obviously. Uh, we, we were a little jaded by the, by the recent pandemic. So we decided to go with, uh, uh, one and two bedrooms. Uh, we feel that, uh, we feel that that's a good concept, uh, for this area currently. So, but we do have a mixed residential, like I said, of, uh, a mixed residential and commercial. Uh, so we, we're promoting that. And I, and we really, uh, but, you know, we, we believe that this housing stock will promote folks lit to live and, um, to work and live in Troy. We, we did, we, we did do, uh, we, this, this we could talk about on the next, on the next meeting. I don't want to, I don't want to go too much into it. But this were the results from the, from the analysis that, that we did, which showed that, uh, essentially taking this, taking this, uh, the buildings and keeping them, uh, do not make any economic sense. Um, so, so not only we did a, a pres- a preservation study that really yielded, yielded that there was really no econo, no historic significance in keeping anything, uh, in the building. We also did, okay, let's, let's, let's look at the economics of it if we wanted to rehab or replace. And, and obviously, um, it, it just doesn't make any sense economically. I wanted to, you just look at some of the benefits of the project. You know, we, this, this building will cost more. Uh, this project will cost more than the, than the previous project. We're anticipating seventeen million dollars plus. Um, we're consistent with the adopted community land use plan. Um, like, again, like I said, we're going to enhance the city of Troy existing housing stock, uh, sixty-two new households downtown, enhancing the vitality and creating a more twenty-four seven atmosphere, which is part of the vision plan, activating new Federal Street with the retail and perhaps a restaurant, uh, envision with what the city wants to do with, uh, the, with the new Federal Street corridor, uh, creation of fifty to seventy-five construction jobs, a full-time jobs in the retail and, uh, you know, injecting about one point three seven million in new discretionary spending in the downtown area. We anticipate, you know, fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars of building department fees. Uh, just want to reiterate that we are providing, uh, we're, we're going above and beyond the call of duty with parking and providing, uh, an, an opportunity for the, for the community to park in a, in a, uh, in a rehab, rehabbed, uh, and safe and beautiful, uh, parking, uh, lot on city property with approximately thirty-eight spaces. Um, and, 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 and to, to that, to that, we want to say that we are increasing the available parking to the community by approximately eighty percent, based on what's available now on Fifth Avenue. Uh, and in total, a hundred and eleven parking spots, uh, will be, we, will be provided and nothing zeros required by the zoning code. In conclusion, the project conforms to all zoning regulations, we know that. Um, we've, we feel we've addressed a lot, a lot, if not all, the neighbors' comments. We've addressed all the previous comments, uh, from the planning board or good, a good chunk of them, as George, George alluded at the beginning of his presentation. And we would like the board tonight to, to take a few actions. Uh, one is lead agency, if we could legally do that, um, and open, uh, open the project to public, uh, hearing for the next meeting. So with that, uh, you know, I'm, I'm open to any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, so before we go to Commissioner comments, I, uh, realized that I forgot before beginning the presentation to acknowledge the fact that Barbara Higbee had recused herself from the consideration of the previous application here. And I just wanted to confirm whether or not she's And I just wanted to confirm whether or not she's confirming recusing herself from consideration of this application.
Anthony, hi, yes, thank you for asking. I don't know. This is a new project, so I am not recused tonight, but I am going to again consider recusing, so. I don't know, but because this is a completely new project, I I am going to think about it and I did, I recused myself. And on on advice of of Andy Brick and others, so I will think about it. Thank you. I'm glad you brought it up.
And Barb, just like last time, I'm always available if you wanted to discuss offline.
I will want to. Thank you. And you've been very helpful.
Great, and so. We are at nine fifteen. I do want to respect everyone's time, including the members of the public. I see that there are many people on the call tonight. Who did come out. As well as members of the commission. Aaron, do you have any thoughts? I mean, are there? If we start a public comment session tonight, my concern is that, you know, it could last for a substantial amount of time.
Well, I mean, you have people who have waited for three hours to speak.
Right.
Potentially. So, you know, I mean, it's, it's, it's up to the commissioners what they would like to do. You know. This is the initial presentation. It's not unusual for other municipalities and other planning boards to. At this point. State that the public hearing will be for the next meeting. And that allows everybody to make themselves available. There's also the option of a special meeting just for public comment. So, you know, last time we received quite a bit of public comment. It can take several hours. We may want to entertain that idea as well.
That was my thinking, either adjourn it to. A date certain where we know where everyone is on notice that that's going to be the public comment or. I hadn't even considered a special session, but I know we've done that in the past for. For example, for the one thousand eleven second. Where there was a large volume of public comment. So let me put it to the commissioners. What do what are the rest of you think?
Anthony, my, my thought is that I think it's. It's good that we heard the presentation tonight. And. Although it's probably frustrating for. For the attendees to. Adjourn at this time, I think a dedicated, my personal opinion is that a dedicated meeting. For this is in everyone's best interest. And I would like to say that although this is a new project. The. The key factors that are different are are the massing, the size, the distribution. Of the architecture, the project isn't notably different. Aside from those factors. And so when it does come time, although we can't prohibit anyone from sharing their thoughts, I would encourage. Those to share their thoughts particular to those. Components of the project. I'll leave it at that.
Suzanne, do you have any thoughts you want to share?
I think, yeah, I think there's going to be hours of public comment and I think that comment needs to be heard. Every, every word of it, and I think that it would just go on too long tonight. You know, it won't get the attention from our, from our brains. You know, that it deserves because everybody's tired and. So I would like to have a special meeting just for this project.
And Roddy, I know you were partyed all the prior meetings on the the previous application, but. If you want to share your thoughts, of course, you're more than welcome to either thoughts on the presentation that we just saw or on the procedure.
No, I think I'm I'm more than amenable to another special meeting or to. Bringing it to the to the next month's meeting, either or, I'm fine with. I think it makes perfect sense what everyone before me said.
Yeah, I I tend to agree. I think that given the time. Especially all the many hours that we put into the previous proposal and I do agree with Commissioner Lingard's. Comments that this proposal, while there are some substantial changes, is still very much in line with the previous proposal in terms of the use, so. Of course, we encourage members of the public to comment with any thoughts that they want to share. But concerns that were raised regarding the prior proposal that we've already heard should maybe be. Prioritized less than ones that are focused specifically on the changes to this proposal. How those address previous comments that were made. And any concerns that are failed to be addressed by those changes. So that's particularly the kind of comment that we want to hear since. Changes have been made from the proposal that was withdrawn to the current proposal.
Mister Chairman, I I just wanted to see if we, if the if the commission could give us. Some feedback, some initial feedback on on this proposal. And and if tonight they could vote. To be lead agent and also vote to to open the public hearing. For the next meeting where there'd be a special meeting. Or or the next meeting, just so that we could begin the process. And not, as you could imagine, we would like to. You know, we understand the process and we just like to get some feedback and and start the process.
I mean, I I wouldn't mind offering some initial feedback is is just that the presentation was really well done. Especially in terms of showing me, someone who's new to the project, how the changes stack up. Between the silhouetting and the backdrop elevation views and profiles along each road. For me, it was informative and I feel like I have a really good understanding of the perspective and the impact of the proposed building on the. Sightlines, on the. Skyline, on just the way it'll fit into the rest of it. If if the greatest. Criticism levied against the project before was the amount of bulk, structural bulk along Fifth. I I see it as significantly shifted as well to being along federal. From the work you've done.
Thank you.
Do any of the other commissioners want to comment tonight?
Yes, this is Sarah and I will, I'll just share that I think it might be better. The the balance of the massing might be better if. The the tall volume on federal were were maybe one story. Shorter and those on Fifth were one story taller. Bringing them into alignment with the height of the. The row houses on Fifth. I don't know if that's going to work out perfectly, but. Things might seem better balanced and I do wonder, and this is actually a question that I'll go ahead and ask. Cosmo and George, what is? What is the, what's the module of the facade on Fifth? And I know that you're not replicating row houses, but are you on sort of a conventional twenty five foot module or is it extra wide? It's kind of hard to tell. Without any dimensions on the drawings.
I'll answer that. This is George. The module is wider because these are two bedroom units and. They're not, you know, a typical row house might distribute that differently with one bedroom in the front and one bedroom in the back. And a living room maybe at the lower level. We're all on one level, so basically if you look at the plans, which are probably hard to see. We have a living room and then two bedrooms. On the street side, so the module, the width of that is opposed to. Say a twenty foot to a twenty five foot width is closer to thirty three to thirty five.
Okay, I thought so. Thank you, George. Yeah, I.
Oh, can I interrupt?
Yeah, of course.
I actually think. Your comment about going up another level makes that proportion of the row house. Rather than horizontal makes it more vertical.
Agreed.
Traditional.
It's something to think about and and that's all I have to share at this time. Thank you.
George, I think perhaps next meeting we could, we could do a. A quick rendering showing that and just to give the 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 commission. An idea on how it would look. For us, unfortunately, the cost will be the same. Because we would have to go down a few stories to 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 change construction type. But, you know, that we're we're more than willing to to explore that and and see how it, how it looks.
Suzanne, did you have any initial reactions you wanted to share?
Yeah. First of all, I'm speaking as a a preservationist and a keen observer of architecture, although I am not an architect. But I know an awful lot about it and first of all, I'm glad that. The architectural team finally took a tour of Troy and looked at the buildings in Troy. I have to say, why didn't you do that two years ago? But I'm glad you did it and. My comments tonight are only regarding the Fifth Avenue facade. I will leave. Any comments I have about the big buildings for later, but I think it's a. An improvement, a great improvement. However. It seems like when you were looking around in Troy, you noticed all the different kinds of buildings which you gave us the photographs of and. It's like it, you came back and you sort of did a Disneyland on us with. You know, you got one Italianate and one Queen Anne and then you got one neo-grec. You got one gray building, one red brick building, one Oriole, one bay and it, to me, that's. That doesn't work. I do like the idea of bumping it up to three stories and reducing the height in the larger building. I actually was going to say that and Sarah, of course. Beat me to it because she knows what she's doing and so. Because the buildings across the street are three stories, I think that would be an improvement. I think, I think. And moving the building away from the church, all of that is great. I think there's some hope here, but I would just beg that you really look. We don't need an imitation Troy. We we need buildings that. Complement the ones across the street and in the city. We don't need. You know, we don't need Disneyland, so I would hope that as you flesh these out a little bit more. We get a little more nuanced to the design. And I'll save everything else I might have for later when we get more details.
Thank you, Suzanne, and I'm also not an architect and I. Would guess that I know far less about architecture than Suzanne does, but I. Have the same reaction that Sarah described towards the starkness of the. The federal street building to the to the row houses. So I also think that the. Slight modification by a story on either side to make them slightly closer and height would be an improvement. Very well. So. Aaron and Andy, as far as process here, I. I don't see any reason why we couldn't vote. To designate ourselves as lead agency tonight, but regarding the public hearing, is there. Is there an effect if we open it tonight, but then don't actually take any comment and simply adjourn it? I'm I'm just curious what the benefit or drawback of that would be.
Public, public hearings can be open at any time. Most, our our meetings are. Are noticed similar to a public hearing. So you guys have the ability to open it tonight if you want, you can. You you don't have to vote to open it at the next meeting. You could just open it at the next meeting. I don't know, Andy, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, two things. First, you absolutely can vote to declare lead agency tonight. There's no question you are the appropriate agency, the B lead agency under secret guidelines. And in terms of opening it tonight, if you're going to schedule a special meeting. That would need to be noticed and published anyway, because it's not part of the regular calendar. Um, so the fact that if it's going to be a special meeting, you just notice it. On that date and time as a public hearing, then you wouldn't have to open it and then close it this evening. So if it's going to be a special meeting, then I think you're fine. If you're going to roll it into the July meeting, then if you opened the public hearing tonight, you could then immediately. Adjourn it and you wouldn't have to renotice or republish, but if it's going to be a special meeting, I I don't think you have to because you got to publish anyway.
That was my feeling as well, so thanks for confirming that, Andy. So. With that said, I think we're looking for a motion to designate the commission as lead agency.
I have, I just have a comment on that. I think we should be lead agency and I think that at some point we will designate ourselves. The question I have is that, first of all, this just, we only got this notice Friday afternoon, so we haven't even had the proper seven day notice. Secondly, it's listed as unlisted. And when the other project was was seen in March, it was, it was a listed. So I I just think we ought to just not do that tonight. We do it whenever we come together the next time. And but I don't, I'm not questioning it. I think it should be the planning commission. And and but just then we will have had time for for the members, the commission members and the public to to see everything and we just, and we just put it off. Whether we do a special meeting or the next meeting, I don't, I don't care. Okay, that's all I had.
This is Suzanne again. I would advocate strongly for a special meeting. I think we're just kicking the can down the road. If we don't, we're going to run into another full schedule of other projects. And it'll be nine thirty and we're going to be looking at it and going, gee, we can't talk about this now. We need a special meeting, so. I think we should schedule a special meeting.
Is it possible to schedule a meeting?
I'm not sure.
Oh, no, we we can't schedule a meeting tonight. No, no, we'd have to check calendars and and work that out. We would, we would. Probably schedule it, assuming you guys make a determination for lead agency tonight, we would probably schedule it for just after that thirty day window. Or at least start looking at dates beyond that thirty day window.
Yeah, so it's important for us to to have the board. Vote on 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 lead agency tonight, just because. That'll just delay the process even more.
Yeah, I mean, for for what it's worth, I would. I would tend to agree with Cosmo. I don't see any reason why the planning commission couldn't make that determination this evening. Regardless of what. Maybe on the agenda. I believe, Andy, we determined last time this was a type one action. Is that correct?
Yes, and and if it's somehow been placed on the agenda or somewhere else that Barb saw that was unlisted action. That can be corrected. That wouldn't impact the ability to declare a lead agency. The primary question for. Lead agency is is whether or not you're the entity primarily responsible for approving the project. There's no question the planning commission is in this instance.
Correct, and and Cosmo did submit the full environmental assessment form. Not just the short form, which is the only requirement I'm aware of, the the differing requirement between the two.
And and my recollection was it was a type one because of substantial. Proximity to something on a historic register was my recollection.
Yes.
That that wouldn't have changed. Things don't come off the. Things don't come off the register and the building's on the same footprint. So if that's what you were to be a type one last time, it would apply again this time.
Yeah, it is listed as unlisted on the agenda, but but we do have the full EAF as part of the submission.
And and again, that that could be corrected through the process will determine exactly what it is. That wouldn't impact the declaration of lead ages.
Well, therefore, this is Sarah. I would like to make a motion that the planning commission declare itself the lead agency for this project, and that we make note that the unlisted action notation in the agenda be struck.
This is Suzanne. I second that.
Okay. Putting it to a vote. Barbara Higbee?
Yes.
Was that me? Yes.
Sarah Winger?
Yes.
And Roddy Yagan?
Yes.
And Anthony Moan, I vote yes as well. So the planning commission is designated as lead agency. And I agree with all the commissioners who've spoken up so far that I think a special session is called for to accommodate all the public comment here. So my suggestion would be that we just vote to table this until that special session can be scheduled.
This is Barb. Do we actually table a concept? I don't know what the proper thing is. Is it tabled or is
That's a very good point, Barb, because there's no, I don't think there's any other proposed action.
Yeah, you can table if you choose to. You don't have to. It was it was introductory. You've had the introduction. It's, you know, that's it. You don't have to take action tonight.
Okay, well, then I think that our recommendation stands that we schedule a special session, and the applicant can follow up with the staff regarding scheduling that and the process for public notice for that hearing.
Thank you very much. And again, I appreciate your time, and I know it's late. Have a very good night. Take care.
Thanks, Cosmo.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, and thanks, Anthony.
So before we adjourn, Andy, I just wanted to follow up on our first item of business. So if we take no further action regarding that, what exactly happens at this point?
Are you discussing the consent that town, city council being lead agent?
Correct.
Yeah, if if you take no further action and no other involved agency objects to consent, the city council at the end of the 30 day timeframe would become lead agency. If any other entity objects, then clearly that's got to be, see if it could be resolved, or it would go to the commissioner. But you, you're, you don't, they don't need your consent. It was, it's it's actually something that needs to be negative, whether or not you would object. And and the resolution to consent failed. So what would happen at the end of 30 days if no other agency objects, they become lead agents?
So since we're still on the record, I would just ask my fellow commissioners, I mean, we can leave things at that, and that will happen. It does, I don't know, I guess my own personal feeling on this is that it would help to have some sort of communication from us. I would be comfortable with some thing communicating to them that even if we do consent, that we are reiterating our previous recommendation to them. But we could also leave it as is.
That Anthony, Aaron, that that is an entirely appropriate response to what you guys have. You you are already tasked with reviewing this and providing a recommendation, which you did. The city council then decided to take the matter up. You could, you could allow them to be late, late, well, you're not allowing them, but you're not objecting to them being lead agency. But again, reiterating the comments that you have made previously, which I believe the city council received from planning in a memo.
So again, we've had one vote. Sorry, you were going to speak.
Yeah, I would just say it again, being an involved agency, you will have a substantial role in the review process. And you will have the opportunity to comment, request additional information. You do have a role. It's not that you're aggregating any type of involvement whatsoever. You will be substantially involved through the process, even though you wouldn't be the lead age.
Anthony. Andy, would we be able to override them or outvote them or or do a run around around them, or what what kind of authority would we have?
You would, as an involved agency, I believe you would have standing to challenge any decision they make in a court of law.
Okay.
I'm not recommending that. I'm simply saying that I think you have, would have standing.
Okay, thank you.
So I I would like to ask I'd like to ask Anthony a question, which is if if you feel passionate that that our commission should serve as lead agency, I would very much like I would consider a revote. I'll just put that on the table.
Well, as I shared earlier, I think that given the particular circumstances regarding this review and our role in it to date, that we could effectively serve as lead agency, understanding that the rezoning portion of the application is something that legally the city council has responsibility for. They've already acknowledged that they wanted our input and advice on that exact question. And then seemingly disregarded that advice. So I I would feel comfortable taking on the role as lead agency and indicating to council that we want to. And I'll just be frank here, since this is part of the public record. I would not be surprised if they would also want us to take on that role, given that they've already asked us twice for our input. They may well have designated themselves as lead agency only because it seemed like the obvious thing to do since they were voting. And they were considering that proposal at the time. But they may not object. I don't know. But I I'm also just as much at sea here, I think, as the rest of you. So I'm happy to entertain other opinions.
One one thing I would point out, not a situation I've experienced before, but I would point out because I think it's important from a practical standpoint. You, as a body, have already made a negative recommendation on the proposed action. I think that fact realistically would call into question your objective, objectivity to conduct a facially neutral, objective environmental review. I I'm not saying that you wouldn't. I know you all. I've gotten to know you all as folks. I know you would be fair and impartial. But the fact that you're already on the record saying you don't think it's a good idea would give someone the ability to call into the question your objectivity to conduct a fair and impartial environmental review on behalf of the application. Just something to consider.
I do appreciate that, Andy, although my thinking is that the considerations that we would bring to bear in the environmental review are exactly the same considerations that we stated during the hearing when we made our recommendation. So I I mean, I think either would stand or fall together or you know, not at all. So
I I think I think then that I'll I'll say that I trust the advice of our council and that we focus on presenting our concerns, reiterate our reasons for not making the original recommendation to the city council and be an active, involved body in the the full duration of the SEACER process and stand by our our earlier vote.
I would also like to see that communicated to the council that we reiterate our previous recommendation and to the extent that there is a positive declaration on SEACER that we would expect to be fully involved in that process.
Aaron, Andy, can we leave it at that?
You absolutely can with a motion to adjourn.
All right. Does anyone have a motion for us?
Make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I second it.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Good night, everyone.
Nice job, Anthony.
Yeah, that was great.